Young and old alike, they may focus on their attention unto thy word.
Pravava yavunastulainemi, rudulainemi, andaru ni vaakyammeeda, mar gamanu unchinaatlu sahaimcheyandi.
Thank thee for the burden that was put in the hearts of the saints here in Jehovah's sake, so that they could have this meeting.
Mar yehovah nisailaodna, visvasalu, iti koodikalu, kaligundalani varu hrodhimlo mirunchina barumunubatti mekondanamalu.
Heavens may be opened unto us.
Mar paralokumalu maakvaraku teravadnugaaka.
And thy word which is eternal and eternal in heaven may be released unto us.
Mar paralokumalu ni chemu nelkada gastaeramugonna ni vaakyammaaku velvadunugaaka.
Thank thee for all those who got connected through Zoom and YouTube, both in India and also abroad.
Mar Zoom dhara, YouTube dhara, ikkada India lo prapancha vaptanga, sanusandaram cheevadnavar andanubatti mekondanalu.
Oh Lord, bless every one of them, help them to receive thy word.
Pravava varandani aashravudinchandi, ni vaakyamvaru, pundinatlu sahaimcheyandi.
We bind the powers of darkness in thy mighty name.
Ni balamayana namumlo, andhakara samandhamayana shaktalu bandhistavunnam.
We are conscious of the prayers of the saints all over the world for us.
Mar prapancha vaptangonna parishuddhalandaru, maakchestinatvanti pradhinalu, meem gamanik kaligunchina.
So, Lord, let thy word penetrate into the hearts of thy dear men and permeate in their lives.
Pravava ma priya sahodilaka hrodhimlo, ni vaakyamu chuchukunpovunugaaka.
Oh, Lord, help us.
Oh, Pravava, sahaimcheyandi.
We are unworthy servants.
Pravava meem ayagilmaya daasalamu.
So, request the sanctify us by thy blood and use as estimeth good in thy sight.
Oh, Pravava, ni rakthum chaita, mamul kadigii, nichitthanasaranaga, nikisthanasaranaga, vaadukkomanu prarjistunam.
Pray with thanksgiving in the precious and sweet name of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ.
Ma prabhu nu rakshikadaina, yesu kristu pravari madrumayana namumlo kriddhikita porukanga adigivedukunchinaamutandri.
Amen. Lord Jesus Christ is going to come again.
Yesu kristu pravvaru tirigiraanaayunnadu.
There is a two-fold burden of the church.
Mar i thi sangamyaka nezumayinatvanti barum.
There is a two-fold burden of the church.
Mar sangamyaka rennantala barumundi.
Firstly.
Matmadi barum.
They have to remind God's people that Lord is coming again.
Mar prabhu tirigiraanaayunnadani devuni prajalaku jñapukam cheevadali.
Lord, that they do not know.
Mar immanaki tilidani kaadu.
They express it in their prayers, in their worship, in so many ways, they know that the Lord is coming again.
Varu pradhinlo, mar chepthaavuntaro, aaradhinlo chepthaavuntaro, valiyaka, vyavahareka jyothula chepthaavuntaro, prabhu tirigavastinadani.
But it is our boundless responsibility to remind them again and again.
Aynapadiki kodha, ma manabajte entente, tirigi tirigi daani gurthujayali.
Well, they have the knowledge of it, but they are not conscious of it.
Aite daanigurunchinatvanti jñana mundigaani, daanigurunchinatvanti siddepaatu varukalathu.
A child of God should always be conscious that my Lord can come at any time.
Na devuniyaka bidda, na prabhu yappudaina, yappudaina vastadane, gamanika manam kaligundal.
There used to be a carpenter in United States.
Mar Amerika lo oka carpenter unnadu.
As he was working in the garage.
Mar a garage laanipani jastunduka.
He's a born again person.
Aynathirigi janminchinavikti.
He was told, Lord can come at any time.
Mar prabhu yesamimulonaaina vastadana, ainikchepbadindi.
He was so sure about it.
Daanivishumaani anto nichitakaliguna.
As he's working with the tools in the garage.
Mar a garage lo ayaka parikralata pani jastunnapudu.
Very often, he will go with the tools and looks unto the sky.
Mar yappataruchika ayaka panamutlu vaadta, baitigila aakashma vayipchusavat.
Wherever he is coming again.
Mar ayni yappudvastinadu.
So much eagerness he had and waiting for the coming of the Lord.
Ento athruthetoto prabhu yappudvastadani veechiinnadu.
He said, at any time, he can come.
Mar ayni chepnadu, ayni ekshanamulonaaina raavachani.
What do we read in Matthew's Gospel, twenty-four verse forty-four?
Mar mathesuvartha, yaravainalgu, nalapayello, yem chadutunam.
Nalapayalgu.
Nalapayalgu.
Twenty-four forty-four.
Mar yaravainalgu, nalapayalgu.
At any time, that means when you are not even thinking, there is a main line there, when you are not even thinking, at that time, he will come.
Manam, anukkonani, anukkonani gadielo, aynavastadu.
Anukkonani gadielo.
Anukkonani gadielo, aynavastad.
So, he will come all of a sudden.
Mar anukkonani gadielo, aynammanaku vastad.
He will come like a thief.
Aynath dongavale vastad.
So, thief will not tell you, phone up and keep everything ready, I will come and collect and go.
Mar dongavodu phone jessni, anostanani, samalanani sadrukunnaman chappadu.
All of a sudden, he will come when you are not even aware.
Mar niyupreite, anukkonavu, anukkonisamimla, aynavastad.
That is what Lord said, I will come like a thief.
Mar ade prabhu chepnadani, anudongavale vastanu.
That tells us that we should be ever ready.
Mar i thi manam yallapudu siddemga undalan chappadu.
Ever ready, you know, ever ready batteries?
Mar yavare ready battery gurunteliskada.
Whenever I see it, I remember this.
Mar yappudaina, ekradina thichusnapudu, dini nenik jñapumjastu.
Ah, we should be ever ready to be with the Lord.
Mar yallapudu, var yippudu kodha prabhu tavunadani, siddemga undal.
That readiness we should wait and wait for the coming of the Lord.
Atuvanti siddepaatu kaliginavarmai, prabhu raakkadakvaraku manam vedrichodali.
And secondly.
Renndadiga.
We should tell the whole world that the Lord is going to come again.
Prabhu tirigiraanaayunnadani, sarva prapanchaniki manam saksamewali.
Whenever we go for open air.
Mar yappreite, manam bahiranga suvarthuku valtamo.
Normally, we end the message by quoting my Acts, chapter sixteen, verse thirty-one.
Mar apostolicarialu, padaharum, muppayogiti cheppi, manam uchivraga mugistam.
Believe on the Lord Jesus Christ, thou shalt be saved and thine household.
Mar pravvaina yesunandu visvashamunchimu, appudu niyuvunu, inti varunu rakshnapundiduru.
You should go beyond that.
Mar niyudini, adigeminche, inkamundukavellali.
Our Lord Jesus Christ is going to come again.
Manapravvaina yesu kristuvaru tirigiraanaayunnadu.
Let the world know that the Lord is alive forevermore.
Mar prabhu sagivunga unnadani, lokamanta tiliebadali.
As the Lord was ascending into heaven and the disciples were gazing at him.
Mar yesu kristu pravvaru paralokanike aarhonavutunnapudu, aynavayipu, aynasishalu, marichuustavunnadu.
Angel of the Lord said.
Mar devuni dotha.
Same Jesus as he goes, same Jesus will come again.
Mar yereetiga yesu pravvaru paikivelitamir chustavunnaro, adeereetiga aynathirigavachinana devaduta chepnadu.
That is the greatest expectation that we have.
Mar ituvanti goppa nirikshana, manam kaligunchina.
We are not left alone and forsaken and fallen by the Lord.
Mar prabhu chaita, ilokumlo, manam vidichpettabadaledu.
We are not alone on this planet.
Aa prabhu naathavunnadu.
He is always with me.
Aynayallapudu naathavunnadu.
Because he said so.
Mar endukanaka, ayni alachepnadu.
Hebrews, chapter thirteen, verse five.
Hebrews, Krasenpatrika, padhumadajamaidavachinam.
In the second portion of that verse, he said.
Aa bagamlo, renndabaagum chepthaavundi.
For he has said, I will never leave you nor forsake you.
Ayni chepnegaada, nenuninu ennadu, viduvanu, yedabayenu.
I always remember one incident.
Mar nenayallapudu, oka sangatna jñapumjastukunta.
When I was in Hebron.
Nenhebronla vunnapudu.
One brother knocked the door.
Oka sahodudu, talupunattinadu.
And he said, where are you alone? I want to come and spend some time with you.
Mar sahodadu, antrigavunnava, niito kontasak, sami ekantanga gadpalannadu.
I said, I am not alone, but you can come inside.
Mar nenayaltrigaleno, aynapadikodha, mirlopolk raavachana.
There is somebody with me, you can come in.
Mar naatho, yavro vunnadu, aynalopolk ochad.
Then I said, there is somebody with me, you can come in.
Ah, naatho, yavro vunnadu, nu aynaganu raavachani chepan.
And then he came inside.
Mar aynalopolk ochadu.
And he is looking for that someone I mentioned.
Mar yavro vunnarann chepnannaka, avikta ekadunadu, anatituchustavunnadu.
He, he room lekweinadu, a room lekweinadu, esukutavu, aynkor.
Mar i roomloka, a roomloki, veli vedukutavunnadu.
Then he asked me.
Tarvata, aynannadigadu.
Uncle, you said, someone is with me, where is he?
Mar uncle, miru yavro vunnarann chepparaka, aynekadunadu.
Then I told him.
Nen tarvata, aynto chepan.
My Lord is with me.
Na prabhu naathavunnadu.
You know what he said?
Mar ayni chepnadu, telasa.
Adya.
Aya, alaga.
Ah, alaga, bah, mutraadu, ma nelvirvasha, adya, antam, yena, alaga. So, many of us, we are not very sure.
Mar manalu chala mande, nichyam kaligundatledu.
Even when I go by flight.
Mar ikkinichne, nen vimanlo velnapudu.
With great difficulty, I walk from the wheelchair, I get into the seat.
Mar ayaka wheelchair lo veli, ento kastanga, a seat lo kuchuntu.
An air hostess actions her hand and take me to the seat.
Mar a air hostess chayeeche, nan tiskeela, kuchilo, kuchobadatar.
And then she asked me.
Tarvata, var aadu, aamadutaru.
Uncle, are you alone? Anybody with you?
Mar uncle, miru, vandragane vunnara, yavrayana, mitthavunnara.
Every time, one air hostess asks this.
Mar yappudaina, i pressnochina, apud, nen illa cheptha.
Air hostess adugutavundindi.
Air hostera adugutavundindi.
Are you alone?
Niyavandragavunnava.
You are traveling in this condition?
Mar ituvanti paristithelo, mir prayanam jastunara.
If I am now standing here, this is the support that I have.
Nenipunnelavannapudu, nakki, support, nak kaligunchinan.
Otherwise, you will fall down.
Mar a support lagpothe, nen kendipadipotan.
So, she asked me, is there anybody with you?
Mar aame adugutavundedi, yavrayana, niithavunnara.
I said, my Lord is with me.
Nen chepanu, na prabhu naathavunnadu.
Oh, that is good.
Mar aunaa, adi chala manchidi.
See, people don't realize.
Mar prajalu, daani gamanincharu.
Our God is true and the living God.
Manadevudu, sagivuainana, jevum kaliginadevudu.
He said, wherever two or three are gathered in my name, there I am in their midst.
Ayni chepnadu, yavreite, eddarmuguru, na namuna koodivuntaro, var majja neruntanani.
And when children of Israel were delivered from the bondage of Egypt.
Israel prajalu, ayuguptiaka, bhanisattulonchi vidupinchabadnapudu.
They have come out.
Var ayugupti bhanisattamlo.
We read in Exodus, chapter twenty-five, verse eight.
Mar nirgumakarnamu, yaravainaidavajamaidavachinamlo.
Lord tells Moses, let them make me a sanctuary, so that I may dwell among them.
Mar viru naakvaraku, parishuddha sthalamnu, nirminchavalenu, nenu var majja, sancharamcheset, nevasinchedano, anichepnadu.
That was the thing that Lord told to the children of Israel.
Mar i thi.
That was the burden of the Lord.
Mar adi prabhu yaka barumayundi, Israel prajalu to devuda arithika chepnadu.
That I may dwell among them.
Nenu, var majja, nevasinchunatlu.
But when it comes to the dispensation of grace, in the present dispensation.
Aite prasutam, manamunnatvanti krupa yugumuloni kavaste.
He dwells in our hearts.
Aynam, manahrodhimlo, nevasistavunnadu.
Not only he is among us.
Aynam, manam majjuloneleedu.
He is also in us.
Manam majjulona matrame kaadu, manahrodhimlo kodanivesistu.
Revelation, chapter three.
Prakatnakranda, mudajayam.
Verse twenty.
Mar yaravyavachinam.
Behold, I stand at the door and knock. If any man hear my voice and open the door, I will come in, come in, I will come in to him and will sub with him and he with me.
Chodandi, prakatnammudu, yaravai, idugu, nen talupuyoddanilchunditattuchinannu, yavrayana, nu na swaramuvini, talupu tisineyadala, nen atani to, atani yodduku ochi, atani to, nenu, naatho kodha, atadunu, bojinamu chedumu.
I with him and he with me.
Nenu, atani to unduno, atadu, naatho kodha untad.
We dwelling in him, he dwelling in us. That is the Christian life.
Manamu, aynayandu nevasistunam, aynam, manayandu nevasistunadu, ideh, Christava jivitam.
That is the ideal Christian life.
Mar i thi, ah, ideal Christava jivitam.
Ah, undavalsina paristithi.
Undavalsina paristithi.
But what is happening?
Aite, yem jarutavundi.
Is there any conducive situation, a situation that will make Lord could dwell in us?
Mar prabhu, manalo nevasinchetvanti paristithi, manam kaligunchinama.
He is the holy one of Israel.
Aynai Israelila parishuddha devudu.
Be holy, for I am holy.
Nenu parishuddhinayunnaparakaram, mirnu parishuddhalayunnadi.
So, unless you maintain that holy ground, unless you make that righteous ground, he cannot dwell in your heart.
Mar ni jivitamlo, a parishuddhamayana bhoomimyadani undakapote, aayaka, niidlo, ni undakapote, aynam, manalo, nevasinchaleedu.
Ball is in your court.
Mar ayaka ballu, nista courtlo.
It is up to you.
Mar adi, ni, niukke.
How you maintain your heart?
Mar ni, hrodhyani, nu yallaga, unchukuntunavo.
Heart is very deceitful, word of God says.
Mar devuni vaakyan chepthindi, hrodhimu, anto mosakaramayinadi.
That is why, yesterday, I was saying.
Aakarnanubatti, nenadinam nen chepnadu.
We should be led to the cross again and again and again.
Manam tirigi, tirigi silva chantaku nadupinchabadali.
Let's we forget Gatsamane.
Manam Gatsamene, nu marchupodumemo.
Let's we forget his agony.
Mar a kalvarasilai, aynapundina, shramnu, vedanu, marchupodumemo.
Let's we forget his love for us.
Aynam, man previnchinaprema, marchupodumemo.
Who is to be led to the cross of Calvary?
Manam kalvarasilva chantaku nadupinchabadali.
That should be our prayer.
Adi, manapradhanayundali.
Oh, Lord, lead me again and again to the cross.
Oh, Pravava, tirigi tirigi silva chantaku, nanu nadupinchu.
There we find the breadth of his love.
Mar akkare, devuniyaka, premanu, manan kanuganagala.
Prema yaka vedalpu.
Prema yaka vedalpu.
And there is where we see the length of his love.
Akkare, prema yaka, podavu, manan kanuganagala.
There we find the height of his love.
Akkare, prema yaka, ettu, manan kanuganagala.
There we find the depth of his love.
Akkare, aynaprema yaka, lotu, manan kanuganagala.
So, that is how he loved us with our lost string love.
Aaritiga, aynasasvatamayana, prema chaita, man previnchinadu.
Ephesians.
Ephesil Krasenpatrika.
Chapter three.
Mudajayam.
Ephesians, chapter three.
Ephesil Krasenpatrika, mudajayam.
Seventeen and eighteen.
Mar padihadu, padhimdevachinam.
That Christ may dwell in your hearts by faith, note that line, that Christ may dwell in your hearts by faith, that he, being rooted and grounded in love, may be able to comprehend and may be able to understand, perceive with all saints, what is the breadth and length and depth and the height.
Chodandi, Telugu, padihadu, padhimdevachinay, ah, kristu, mi hrodhimlo, visvasham dhara, nevasinchinatlu, gamanich, kristu, mi hrodhimlo, visvasham dhara, nevasinchinatlu gaanu, tanam mahimaiswari cheppanu, mekudai chayvalnani, miru devuni sampurnatiyandu, purunlagunatlu, prema yandu, verupari, stirapadi, samastha parishuddhalu to kodha, daani vedalpu, podavu, ettu, lotu, anto grahenchukunatukku, kristuknu, kuminchinak, jñanamu, kuminchinak, kristu premanu, mir tinsukunatukku, shaktikalavarakavalnani, prarjinchichinannu.
No, that is the burden of apostle Paul.
Idi apostolayana, pauliaka, barum.
That the Ephesians may understand his matchless love.
Mar i Ephesilonevanti visvashalu, prabhu yaka, asamanaayinatvanti preman, ardamjaskavalan, koornadu.
And they may comprehend the greatness of that great love.
Mar a goppa prema yaka, goppatana, ni var grahinchalani, addanjaskavalan, koornadu.
We need to understand his massive love, matchless love, with which he loved us.
Vaani, ayni yaka, aparamayana, asamanaayinatvanti premanu, manam ardamjaskavala.
How could he love this earthling, unworthy, insignificant person as we are?
Mar bo samandhamayana, yeniklenatvanti, trunikarinchabandatvanti, vikti, ayni yereetiga, preminchkalukutunadu.
But yet he loves us.
Mar aynapadiki kodha, aynapremistunadu.
Because of what she left, all glory in heaven came down to this earth.
Mar aakarnanubatti, tanayaka mahimnu, anta kodha vidichpetti, ilokanika, aynavachinadu.
Humbled himself even unto the death of the cross.
Mar kalvarasilva ko, tanutanu, tagginchukunthu achinadu.
And shed his precious blood for us.
Manakvaraku, tanaprasastamayana, rakthani, chindinchinadu.
In that shed blood, he made a provision for the forgiveness of sins.
Aynachindinchinatvanti raktham dhara, nenapapumnu, mar vikshamapanu, margani kaligijesnadu.
He made a provision for our forgiveness of our sins.
Manapapumla, vikshamapanu, karekayana, sadupayamu, airport jesnadu.
That is how we are saved when we came to him.
Aakarnanubatti, manu, ayni yoddukochinapudu, manam rakshinchabadutunam.
So, we need to create conducive situation for the Lord to dwell in our hearts, so that he could control us, govern us, and rule us, and lead us.
Manaprabhu, manaka, manalni, mar control jessi, manal nadupinch, manlo, aynam, aynan nadupinchunatlikka, aynik anukolamayinatvanti, vaatavarnani, manahrodhimlo kalpinchukaval.
John's Gospel.
Yohannesuvartha.
Chapter one.
Madityajayam.
Verse thirty-six.
Muppayaaroachinam.
And looking upon Jesus as he walked, he said, behold the lamb of God.
Atadu, nadichuchinna, yesu vayipchuchi, idugu, devuni gorupilla, anicheppanu.
Behold the lamb of God.
Idugu, devuni gorupilla.
This expression may continue to ring in our hearts.
Iyaka, maata, mana yaka, chavullo, yedatagaka, ginguru, manali.
Behold the lamb of God.
Idugu, devuni gorupilla.
Look unto the lamb of God.
Devuni gorupilla vayipchodandi.
Follow the lamb of God.
Gorupilla, nu, vembadinchandi.
Have fellowship with the lamb of God.
A gorupilla to safasamuchayandi.
Let you be led by the lamb of God.
A gorupilla chaita, nadupimpabadandi.
So, there is a wonderful situation in our Christian life.
Idi mana Christava jivitamlo, adbutamayinatvanti paristithi.
When we accepted our Lord Jesus Christ as our personal Lord and Savior.
Yesu kristu pravvarani, mana vikthikata, santarakshiniga, angikarinchinapudu.
He had blessed us with all spiritual blessings in heavenly places, in Christ Jesus, according to Ephesians, chapter one, verse three.
Ephesil Krasenpatrika, Madityajayam, mudavachinaparakaramu, aynakristesunandu, atma samandhamayana, prati aashirvadamnu, paralokumavishyamla, aynam, manan kanugreinchinadu.
He has blessed us all these spiritual blessings.
Atma samandhamayinatvanti, paralokavishyala, prati aashirvadanu, anugreinchinadu.
On his part, he has given us those blessings.
Mar aynapakshana, aashirvadalani, man kichinadu.
On his part, he has shed abroad his love according to Romans five, five.
Mar Roma patrika, aidavajayam, aidavachinaparakaram, aynapakshana, aynaprema, manahrodhimlo, kummarinchadu.
Kummarinchanadu.
A, manahrodhimlo, kummarinchadu.
But now, are we retaining that love?
Aite, a premla, manam nilichinama.
Are we retaining that love?
Aa premanu unchukani vunnama. Aa premanu, manam unchukani vunnama.
Did we show, are you expressing that love to others?
Ayaka, premanu, unchukunatlate, a premanu, nu, italuk chupistunava.
Christian life is a life of practice, it is not theory.
Mar Christava jivitamani, adi, teeri kaadu, kriyaaporukamayana, vyavahareka jyothu.
Who ought to practice what is said in the word of God.
Mar devuniyaka, vaakyami, edaite, chappadindu, daani, manam kriyaaporukamga, chesavargavundal.
Yesterday, we read First Corinthians, chapter one, verse thirty.
Nenadinam, madukarindi, madityajam, muppayavachinam, chadukunam.
When we accept him as our personal Lord and Savior.
Yappreite, yesu kristu pravvarani, manasantarakshikuniga, angikarinchinam.
As he comes and dwells in our heart.
Aynavachi, manahrodhimlo, nivasam jastavunnadu.
He has become everything for us.
Ayni, manaku, samastamu, aynadu.
First Corinthians.
Madukarindi.
Chapter one.
Madityajayam.
Verse thirty.
Mar muppayavachinam.
But of him are ye in Christ Jesus, who of God is made unto us wisdom and righteousness and sanctification and redemption.
Muppay, muppay, okittunay, aite, aynamoolamga, mir kristesunandu vunnadu, mar adisainchavadu, prabhu nandhi, adisainchavalan, raivan, naravennatlu, devuni moolamga, aynam, manaku, jñanamu, niitiyu, parishuddhatiyu, vimochinamu, naenu.
He had become our wisdom.
Ayni, manak jñanamayinadu.
He had become our righteousness.
Ayni, manan niitayinadu.
He had become our sanctification.
Ayni, manaparishuddhatayinadu.
And he had become our redemption.
Ayni, manavimochinayinadu.
These are the wonderful things that has happened unto us when we came to the Lord Jesus Christ.
Yappreite, manam, yesu kristu pravdagarikochinamo, i adputamayinatvanti sangatlu, jariginay.
If you are not aware of it.
Mar dini kanaka, ni gurtharakonda, unte.
Let it be known to you.
Mar adi, mekoo, tilijayabadanevundi.
That God has blessed us with heavenly riches, spiritual riches.
Mar atma samandhamayana, paralokumasamandhamayana, aashirvadamto, devu, man, aashravudinchinadu.
Yesterday, we have seen how he had become our wisdom.
Nenadinam, ayni yereetiga, manak jñanamayinadu, chusam.
James, chapter three, verse seventeen.
Yakopatrika, mudajam, padihadavachinam.
Gives us a clue of what that wisdom is.
Mar adi, etuvanti, jñanamu, anedhi akkada, chappadindi.
This is a wisdom from above, it is a heavenly wisdom.
Idi, paralokum samandhamayinatvanti, jñanamu.
There are eight characters mentioned there.
Akkada, yenamidilakshnavalu, chappabaddai.
As I said before.
Nenatitinam nen chepnrietiga.
This wisdom from above does not mean that you can score well in your interviews, in your exams, and get through them.
Kavati, i paininchuvache, jñanamu ante, niyaka, parikshalo, man, niyaka, interviewlo, manchi, markal raavudam, mar, uttiyandavudam, aagnanam kaadidi.
That could be intelligence.
Mar daani, mar intelligence antar.
Ah, intelligence, apalinti, tilivi.
Tilivi antar.
Idi amo, jñanam.
Idi, jñanamu.
Okadannaata.
Okadannaadu.
Var yavadi, tilivundra, kanik jñanam leedannaata.
Varik tilivundra, jñanam leedannaadu.
See, there are two different things.
Mar rendu, ivi, vera vera sangat.
You may be very intelligent.
Niyochala, tilivainu vadavadu.
And score ninety-nine marks in mathematics.
Math, mathematicslo, tombe tomde, markalni, kochindochu.
At physical science and all that, you may score ninety-eight, ninety-nine, even hundred.
Mar physical science meetlo, tombe tomde, tombe, vandamarkalochchindochu.
That is all attributed to the intelligence, tilivi, that you have.
Mar ivani kodha, denibattandi, ni kunnatvanti, tilivini batti.
The word of God says.
Devuniyaka vaakyan chepthavu.
The heavenly wisdom is different from tilivi.
Mar paralokupu jñanamu, i tilivi ki verega undi.
Heavenly wisdom is a Christian character.
Mar paralokasamandhamayana, jñanamu, Christava gunalakshnamu.
Yeah, understand this.
Mar dini ardamjaskundi.
Wisdom from above, wisdom from heaven, that God gives us when we come to him, it is a character that we must have.
Kavati paininchuvache, jñanamu, paralokupu jñanamu, i di, Christu, niyaka, gunalakshnamu, yappreite, yesu kristu pravvarani, manasantarakshiniga, angikaristunamo, ayni, manaka, jñanamayinchinadu.
And then, when he becomes our wisdom.
Yappreite, aynam, manak jñanamayinadu.
Then you should have this character in you.
Mar i gunalakshnavalu, manajivitamlo, kaligundali.
You should have purity of life.
Niyuparishuddhamayana, jivitanik kaligundali.
Purity of thought.
Mar manalavachinlo, pavitrahtakaligunadu.
He should be a peaceable person.
Niyusamadana, karamayana, vikthiga vundal.
There should be gentleness in you.
Ni lo, mruddutvam undali.
You should be easily be int- intreated.
Mari sulobam ganu lobadevadu gaundali.
You should be full of mercy.
Mari samastamayana kanikiramto nee nindiundali.
You should be full of good fruits.
Mari vanchi falamalu to nee nindiundali.
And also you should be without any partiality whatsoever.
Mari evedhamaayana paksha pathamu lenivadu ganu undali.
And without any element of hypocrisy.
Evedhamaayana vesha darana lenivadu gaundali.
Ah vesha darana neede undagun.
Mari vesha darana neede undakoodu.
We thought at one point of time in our fellowship.
Manak sahavasamlo, vaka samayamlo alachichina.
We are real Christians.
Manammo, meem, manam nizamayana Christavulum.
We are real believers.
Meem, manam nizamayana viswassulum.
And we used to disdain the denominations.
Mari aayak, migilna denominationu trunikarinchevar.
Ah varni tuchika chusavaram.
Varni takku, takku ga chusavaram.
We are believers.
Meem, viswassulum.
And we, we cannot sing songs that were composed by them.
Mari varu edaita patla rasna, ah patla manam padavaram kaadu.
Ah if you are, you are a part of already, it is darshinukolpinaanta.
Mari yavreena patla padathi, it is darshinukolpina.
Ah he has launched the vision of the church and.
Mari adi sangadharshinukkaadu.
I'm the stronger, we are, so strong we are.
Mari anta balanga manam undevaram.
No, everything has been diluted.
Mari eppudanta koda kalushutamai pendi.
Now they are calling us.
Varu eppudu malapilistavunnaaru.
Nominal believers.
Mari na- nominal Christavulu.
Ah naamkevaaste, Christ, naamkevaaste, viswassulu.
Mari peruk maatrame viswassulu.
Viswassum leni viswassulu.
Viswassam leni viswassulu.
Mari adi etla?
Adilla.
Atlanai.
Mari atlanai.
That is how we are behaving.
Mari alage manam.
That is how we are living.
Mari alage manam.
That is how we are interacting with others.
Mari eereetiga nee etalato manam matlartavunnaam.
That element of love is lamentably lacking in our midst.
Mari anto durdustkaranga, aa prema netvanti di manalo ledhu.
That warmth is missing.
Mari aa.
Vetshadanam.
Mari aa vetshadanam manedhi manak kolpoyam.
Ah that is not there.
Adi ledhu.
Everything has become matlavki.
Mari anta koda acharamai pendi.
Matlavki, matlavki ante, there is a Hindi expression to say, yedho avasarmuntane, varis avasarmuntane, varan premishtam.
Mari yavdenna avasarmuntane varan premishtam alagaipendi.
Ah that is called matlavki antar Hindi lo.
Mari matlavki antar Hindi lo.
Matlavki love, matlavki relationship.
Matlavki relation, avasarmuntane preminchesahavasa.
When did the Lord love us?
Mari eppudu pravu malapreminches.
Revelation chapter one verse five.
Mari prakarnagrandam madhitajyam aidavich.
He loved us.
Aayana malapreminchi.
And then washed us.
Aayana malakadiginaadu.
It does not say he washed us and then loved us.
Mari aayana malakadigimalapreminchinadan rai badledhu.
Even in that unwashed condition, he loved us.
Inkanu manam kadaga badani stithilo undagani, aayana malapreminches.
And then he shed his precious blood.
Tarvata aayana prasastamayana raktani chindinchinaadu.
Washed us, sanctified us.
Malakadigipavitra barchinadu.
And then he made us his own.
Mari aayana tanas suttuga manajaskunadu.
So that God who said, I will dwell among them.
Mari nenu var majja nevishtanu anichepina deudu.
Now he is dwelling in us.
Aayani eppudu manak hrodhimlo nevasistuna.
Now the question is.
Aite presshne antante.
Is he dwelling in your heart now?
Mari eppudu aayana nee hrodhimlo nevasistaavunnaada.
Is there a conditional, practical Christian spiritual situation in your heart?
Mari aayana nevsinchetuvanti kriyaapavakamayana twenty paristithi nee hrodhimlo onnada.
Yesterday I said.
Ninnadidinam nen jepna.
In everyone's heart, there are two things by faith.
Mari prativaniyaka hrodhimlo, mari viswassamda rendu, rendu vishal untai.
One is throne, the other one is the cross.
Vakati simhasanamu, inkavati siluva.
If you are on the cross, then he is on the throne.
Nee vodchala silume duunte, aayana simhasanume duuntad.
Then if you occupy the throne, then he is on the cross.
Mari nee ganaka simhasaname dakuchoontae, Yesu pravu var silume duuntad.
Ah that means you are crucifying him afresh again.
Mari daan ardam entante, nee tajaga, mari Yesu pravu var silu vestavunna.
Who should yield to him.
Nee vodchala aaynik lobadali.
See Romans.
Romili krashin patrika.
Romans chapter six.
Romili krashin patrika aro ajayam.
Romans chapter six.
Romili krashin patrika aro ajayam.
Then how you will have wisdom from above.
Mari eereetiga painintu vache jyanam manam kaligundam.
Unless you yield, you will not get that wisdom.
Nee vodchala aaynik lobadaka potte, ee jyanani manam pandaliam.
Romans chapter six verse thirteen.
Romi- Romili krashin patrika aro ajyam padmodavich.
Neither yield ye your members as instruments of unrighteousness unto sin, but yield yourselves unto God as those that are alive from the dead and your members as instruments of righteousness unto God.
Mari me avayamalu durneethiki sadhanamulga papamunaku appagimpukudi, aite murtillonundi sajivulamanukoni, mimunumi re deu nikki appaginchukunadi, me avayamalu neeti sadhanamulga deu nikki appaginchudi.
Verse nineteen.
Pantam davich.
I speak out of the manner of men because of the informity of your flesh for, as you have yielded your members servants unto uncleanness and to iniquity and breathy, even so now, yield your members servants to righteousness and to holiness.
Chorandi pantam, meero shariira balighenathinabatti manusreetiga matlartichinano, ee managa akramamchetukai, apavitratukunu, akramanuku me avayamalu dasulga yalaaga appaginchithro, alage parishuddhata kalugutukai, eppudu me avayamalu neeti ki dasulga appaginchudi.
Ah yield yourself unto God.
Mari eppudu deu nikki manavayaval appaginchaa.
That means Lord, I keep up, I kept, keep aside all my plans and my strategies.
Diin ardam entante, prava nayaka pranalekulu udeshalanikoda nen pakana bedavunna.
I come to end of myself.
Prava nanu nen, samponanga nik appaginchukuntanu.
I have been planning so many things for my life.
Na jyutangorakenna nen pranalek jaskunadu.
Oh Lord, now you plan my life.
Prava eppudu nee kapaginchukun, nee vena jyutan pranalek chendidi.
Here I have come.
Prava nen ekar kochinaan.
So what have God says.
Deu ni vaakim japtav.
Yield your members, yield your members.
Me avayamalu appaginchukunadi.
Ah what are those numbers?
Ah avayamalu enti?
Your ears.
Nee chavulu.
Your eyes.
Nee kallu.
Your mouth.
Nee noru.
Your heart.
Nee hrodhimu.
Your hand.
Nee chethalu.
Your feet.
Nee padamalu.
Everything you should yield, surrender at the feet of the Lord.
Mari samastamu koda Yesu Kristo padamalku appaginchaa.
Many times I hear, at the time of the worship.
Mari chala saalu aaradallo nen vintanu.
Not only here in India, everywhere outside also.
Mari India lo ne kaadu, mari bhai taku velnapudu koda bhai tadeshala koda vintanu.
They keep worshipping.
Mari varu aaradana.
At the end, they say like this.
Mari achivarlo aaradalila chaptav.
Lord, I have nothing to give you.
Prava neeku appaginchadani, evadani nadagri emile.
I take this cup of salvation and offer my worship unto you.
Mari eyaka rakshnapathra netvukun, nee aaradani karpishtanana anta.
Bible lo undu gata rakshnapathra.
Rakshnapathra chata patukunadu.
Ah I would go to karpishtananta.
Adi patukunarpishtara.
Unless I have nothing to give you, Lord.
Prava neeku evadani nadagri.
I offer this rakshnapathra.
Ah rakshnapathra neeku patukune aaradnarpishtanu.
You don't have anything?
Neek emileva.
Don't you have your eyes?
Neek kallileva.
Don't you have your ears?
Neek chavuleva.
Don't you have your mouth?
Neek norleeda.
Don't you have your heart and your hands and your feet?
Maneyaka hrodhimu kallu chethalu neekileva.
That is what the Lord says.
Adhe pravu japtavunna.
Surrender your members.
Nee me avayamalu aayanka appaginchudi.
Yield your members unto God.
Mari deu nik me avayamalu appaginchudi.
Only then God can, God can dwell in your heart.
Appudu maatrame deudumalana hrodhimlo nevsinchakalugutadu.
Further you read Romans chapter twelve.
Mari Romili krashin patrika panindavajayam mundukachavutam.
Verse one.
Madhitavich.
Romans, Romans chapter twelve verse one.
Roma patrika panindavajayam madhitavich.
I beseech you therefore brethren, by the mercies of God, that he present your body, a living sacrifice, holy, acceptable unto God, which is your reasonable service.
Kaavati sahodarlara, parishuddhamunu deu nik anukkulumunaina sajiva yaagamga, me shariiramlu aayanku samarpinchukunadani, deu ni vaachamilibattimimnu brathmalukunichinano, iti seva meeku yuktamayinadi.
Offer your members.
Me akka shariiramlu aayanku appaginchudi.
Now he says, he offer your bodies.
Ikada me akka shariiramlu anchaptinadu.
Your total self, you should surrender at the feet of the Lord.
Nee akka soyamantatni koda pravu padalaku appaginchaa.
Have you done it?
Nee danchesnava.
You have done it?
Nee danches.
Now during this meeting, now you do it.
Mari okavala chake potte, ee kuudukilona inach chendidi.
Lord, I come to you.
Oh prava nee dagir.
I surrender all my members unto you.
Na shariira avayavalani koda neek appagistavunna.
Do you know what you have does not belong to you?
Mari manam em kaliginnama, adi manadu kaadani meeku telisa.
I think I said somewhere, my, when my daughter was very young.
Mari nayaka kumarthe, yavanadaslaavunna putunna.
Yavanak, manas was very small.
Ar chinnapavatigaavunna putunna.
We kept her in between me and my wife.
Mari nakku, na baraku majja jariginasangatana.
And then I held her cheeks and said, these are mine.
Mari nenam bugalapattukun, nee vinaviyant jepnan.
My wife held her fingers, she said, these are mine.
Na baria, aa papacha, velipattukun, nee vinaviyant jepnan.
Like that, each one of us, we are claiming everything of our body.
Mari eereetiga, aa shariila pratyaavayamalu, avimnavani manam korukuntavunta.
Adi, adi, manam kaadu, meem.
Meem, korukuntanu.
We were korukuntavunta, we, this is the nadhi enti, am, is the nadhi. Ni, is the nadhi enti, am, adhi nadhi.
Idi nadanti, aa nadanti, am, adhi nadhi.
We were, I was, we, we means I and my wife, we were claiming everything that belonged to her.
Mari am, mattham maakuchennanani meem korukuntavuntnam am bak.
Finally she said.
Mari achivariga am chepindi.
Nademi ledha.
Nademi ledha.
That is how that little girl said at that time.
Ah eereetiga chinnabalika samaylo chepindi.
Now she is grown up with the two daughters.
Mari eppudu perigindi, etal kumarthila am.
So what do we read in first Corinthians chapter six verse nineteen?
Madhikorindi aro ajyam pantam davich.
I read that verse.
Mari aavichinam chavutam choddi.
First Corinthians six nineteen.
Madhikorindi aro ajayamu pantam davich.
Ah seven.
Me dehamu, deu ni vala me anukrimpavadi, milonunnana parishuddhatmuka alaimayunna dani meeruguda, meer me suttukaru.
Meer me suttukaru.
Meer me suttukaru.
You are not your own.
Meer me suttukaru.
You know why?
Endukotha.
You have been purchased.
Meer viluvpetti konabadinevar.
Ah but is also there, you have been purchased by the blood of the Lord.
Mari Yesu Kristo pravu varaka raktam chata konabadinevar.
Ah Acts of apostles.
Apostolkaremlu.
Chapter twenty.
Iravayajayamu.
Verse twenty eight.
Iravayenamidavich.
Acts chapter twenty verse twenty eight.
Apostolkaremlu iravayajyam iravayenamidavich.
Ah seven.
Deudu tanaswarakthamichisampadinchina tanasangamunu, kaaitaku parishuddhatma mimunudheniyenda adjekshilga unchino, aa yavat mandanugurciu, me matiku mimunugurciu jagartaga undudi.
There we find that expression, purchased.
Mari ikarchustanam, tanaswarakthamichisampadinchina.
Swarakthamichis, that means the blood of God.
Mari adi deu.
Very rare we have that expression, he has purchased us by the blood of God.
Deudu tanaswarakthamichimalasampadinchinaadu, konukunadu.
That is why what we have, everything belongs to him.
Ah karnanabatti manam edaita kaliginnama, aa samastamu aayanku chendinadi.
When you know that everything belongs to him.
Eppudai te, aa na samastamu aayanku chendindanu verugutavo.
How can we misuse them?
Mari daani eereetiga manam tapugavadavu.
We have to use them for the glory of God.
Manam deu ni mahimukorakai vathni vadali.
Because word of God says.
Deu ni vaakim japtavundu.
Ah Isaiah forty three verse seven.
Esya grandam nalpe murajyam edavich.
I have created you for my glory.
Na mahimanimittamu nen mimulsninminchinaanu.
Ah that is what the Lord says.
Adhe pravu japtavunna.
For his glory, we were created.
Aayana mahimanimittmai ninu nanu koda sushchinchina.
So by everything that we have, we should glorify him.
Manak kaligina samastamu to, aayanu mahimiparachaa.
Anything that happens.
Mari emi jariginapaduki.
Any sickness.
Mari ee anarogimachinapadu.
Any detriment in the family.
Mari kutamullo ee samashachinapadu.
Any tension, any problem.
Mari etuvanti votidaaina samashachinapadu.
You know what should be our burden?
Maneyaka barameyandadu.
Through these very negative situations, we want that thy name should be glorified.
Prava etuvanti ananukola paristithilo koda eppudu nee naamani mahimutetchukoman pradinchaa.
When I was hit from all sides.
Mari nenu anni vaiplinchinani kottabadinapadu.
Tsunami after tsunami hit me.
Mari tsunami tarvata tsunami nanukottindi.
In the midst of that terrible stress and strain came that song, Hallelujah padaa prabhu ninu koniada.
Aduvanti bayinkaramayana tufanuvanti paristithilo majlo, Hallelujah padaa danaa paata nakochindi.
What is the highlight of that song?
Mari ayaka paatalo, mari bhaaga manam mechukunadagindanti.
Mechukunadagindagi, highlight, important.
Ekkuva praamukkamayinadi enti.
The last verse.
Mari achivariba.
That is my teaching money.
Adhe na saksham.
Ee jyivita yatra lo, emi sambavinchina. Ah ledhu, ah ledhu, parbhaani. Ee jyivita yatra lo, emi sambavinchina, mahimani kevo prabhu, idi ena dina pradhana, mahimani kevo prabhu, idi ena dina pradhana, prabhu aninno ne koniada. Gannu ledhu malaa, va ee create jastanadu manol.
Mari andalol leni veesushchistavunna.
Prabhu aaninno ne koniada. Adi, so whatever happened to us.
Manaki emi sambavinchinapaduki.
Any terrible thing.
Enta bayinkaramayana paristithochinapadu.
Many times in our families, we are hit by tsunami after tsunami, from all sides.
Mari chala saalu, marakutamullo, marani anni konalinchii tsunami tarvata tsunami lmalakodavunta.
We wonder how to escape from this.
Manam vaatlunchi eereetiga baitpadaalanani alachistavunta.
Who will come and deliver us from this situation?
Etuvanti paristithilounchi yavrochinannu vidupishtaranijust.
Even in that situation, your prayer should be, oh Lord, even through this situation, thy name may highly be exalted and be glorified for your name sake.
Prava etuvanti paristithilo koda nee naamamu ma jyutundara hechinchabadi, ganaparchabadaalanani pradinchavargavundal.
If you come to that situation.
Aduvanti paristithikine vachnatlaitai.
Then that heavenly wisdom would be worse.
Appudu aa paraloka jyanam manadavutundu.
And all those eight Christian characters will be in you.
Mari aa enemidhi Christva gunalakshnalu manavavutai.
Yesterday I said, write them down on a piece of paper.
Ninnadidinam nen jepnanu, kaangitame davatna rasukon.
All the eight qualities mentioned there.
Mari akada chapubadna enemidhi gunalakshnal rasukonan jeppana.
Where is it written?
Mari adi ekara rai badindi.
James chapter three verse seventeen.
Yakopatrika murajyam padiheda ochinlo rai badindi.
I raise, you pray in your heart and then look at them.
Mari nee rasukun, nee hrodhimlo pradana chesi, varan vaipichoodal.
And then see whether you, your life matches with those eight things.
Mari aa enemidhi vishalaki, nee jyutam staripotunda ledhu, polchikavu.
You will find many things will be unticked, you cannot tick them, because you have those things, wrong things.
Kavati, aa manam chusinapadu chala vishal manam tickchailam, endukante manak jyutamo aa lakshnalu levu.
Konni undachu, konni undakupochu.
Konni undachu, konni undakupochu.
That is how our life is a duck model, vada samudra lo thanukaladusunna, thanukaladavunna.
Mari aa eereetiga samudramlo vada atitu, alalka kotukunnatlu, manajyutam kotukuntavundi.
So, Lord has become our wisdom.
Pravu ve manaku jyanamainadu.
Ah that means he has become our wisdom main.
Aine manak jyanamainadu.
He had become his character.
Aayana manak gunalakshnamadi.
All those characteristics we should have in our life.
Mari ee gunalakshnalani koda manak Christva jyutamlo kaligundali.
And then secondly.
Rendavika.
The word of God says.
Deu ni akka vaakim japtav.
First Corinthians one thirty.
Madhikorindi vakati muppay.
Made unto us wisdom and righteousness and sanctification and redemption.
Chorandi, aayana manaku jyanamu, neethiyu, parishuddhatyu, vimochinamaayeno.
The second thing is, he had become our righteousness.
Rendavika aayana manak neetiainadu.
He had become our righteousness.
Aayana manak neetiainadu.
Me pakunavu, niderapothi, gitchandi.
Me pakunavu, niderapothi, vaksar gitchandi.
Ah malak gistu koopadrananu, chikvagandi, lapandi.
Lapandi.
Ah preyamato.
Preyamato lapandi.
So, he has become our wisdom.
Aayana manak jyanamainadu.
And he has become our righteousness.
Aayana manak neetiainadu.
You understand that?
Nee diin ardam jaskundi.
It is a very important subject.
Idi chala praamukkamayana amsham.
Lord Jesus Christ has become our righteousness.
Yesu Kristo pravu varay manak neetiainadu.
Abraham believed God and that believe that faith was accounted unto him as righteousness.
Abrahamu deu ni namino, adi atani ki neeti ga yanchabadinadi.
That means how can you get righteousness?
Mari daani addamu enti, nee yala neetamachibadi.
Increasing faith, increasing dependence upon him.
Nee jyutamlo, viswassamlo, nee vodchala dinamoo yedugutavundali.
You should trust him more and more.
Mari yedateka aayaniyandunu namikunchaa.
We find in Psalm sixty two verse eight.
Mari keethan aravareendu enamidhi lo manam just.
Trust the Lord at all times.
Mari ellapadu aayaniyandu manam namikunchaa.
And his praise shall continue in my mouth.
Aayana keethi.
They trust the Lord at all times, and you pour out your soul in the presence of the Lord.
Mari ellapadu aayaniyandu manam namikunchudamante, manayaka hrodhyani ellapadu aayana sanidini kummarinchaa.
Yeah, you have trust.
Nee vodchala aayaniyandu namikunchite.
That trust will make you to come on your knees in the presence of the Lord.
Ayaka namika deu ni sanidilo, ninu mokala medhkocheda attu chestundi.
And then it is only on the ground of righteousness you should pray.
Mari nee vodchala neeti yuktamayana twenty, bhoomime deenu pradanchaygalgal.
If you are not righteous.
Nee neeti mantiriga undakupothai.
But Lord said, I am your righteousness.
Mari pravu jepna, nenene neetiayunnanu.
But yet people presently, they are not able to maintain that righteousness.
Aayana paduki koda prasamprazalu, aa neeti ni konasaginchala kapothavunna.
They were deviating from the faith of God.
Devaniyandali viswasmunchi toligipothavu
They are being sucked by the world
Mari lokamuchata var aakashinchibadata
Being attracted by the wiles of the enemy
Mari shetrueyaka swaramulichata, matalichata aakashinchibadata
Being attracted by the passions of this world
Iloka aakashalichata, mari aakashinchibadata unnar
When I was in Hebron
Nenhebronlunnapudu
What girl came to me
Okaa, baal, girl na dagirukochindi
Uncle kindly pray for me
Uncle nakoruku pradhanchaymandi
As she was coming from the door
Ame ayaka doorlo inchu vustunduka
She was wearing a skirt which is very up
Mariyaka skirt eskundadi chala payikundi
Payikundi, and as she was coming
Ame vustunduka
She was feeling shy to come to me
Manadagirakaravudaniki sigupadata undi
As she was coming
Ame vustavunduka
She was pulling it down
Mariyayaka skirtnu, kindike laakuntavu
Laakuntavusavudi
Mari laakuntavustavu
That means he doesn't like that
Mariyadan ardamjentente, adhami kishthamle
And she's pulling it down
Ame kindikalaakuntundi
Then I told her
Nen Ame to jepna
Papa avantakante kindikaradan jepna
Papa avantakante kindikaradan jepna
Eedchinna papa
Apaap eedchindi
Then she told me
Sarvata Ame jepindi
Uncle, I don't want to wear this
Uncle nakidu eskodam isthamle
I refuse to wear it
Nen eskona jepna
My mother forces me
Na thalli balavantanjessi
She says I want that you should be modern girl
Mariyame jepindi, neuvu modern girlga undalan jepindi
That is how many parents find their children
Aaritika chala thallidandalu, val bidalnu padijestavu
They try to imitate the attractions of this world
Valu illoka padthatellu, mari partinchavargaga chestavu
You have to be spiritual people
Manam aatmimayana prajalamu
Ah that spirituality should be seen in your attire, in the way that you dress
Mari nuv eskunati 20, vasadaarnalo aatmita kanabadali
In our assembly, Delhi
Maayaka Delhilam assembly
Who don't allow any girls come with pants
Mariyey baalikalu, a pant leeskuda
Baalikalu, bah, kontmani ardamgadu baalikalu
Mariyeyavudimayana ammaelu, mari pant leeskundaravudaniki memanumuthincham
Yeah, and also boys, we don't allow jeans to wear and come
Mari magupillalu jeans pant leeskundaravudaniki anumuthincham
Anta tightga, anta shape of the body antas
Mariyanta tightiga, valyaka shariyaram aakaran kanabadata
And also we don't allow to come with the T-shirts
Mari T-shirts eskundaravudaniki memanumuthincham
Once one brother came
Oksaaro sahodhachadu
Young fellow
Mariyavunastudu
Up to here, cut, cut, cut T-shirt
Mariyikadaka cut T-shirt eskunachadu
Salman Khan, madzul sanjubistanu
Mariy Salman Khan
A portal vustundakada
Mariy Salman Khan madzil chubistanu, alla chubistana
Ah you know, cut bunnyon
Mariy cut bunnyon
Ochukushunadu
Ochukuchunadu
Then I took him outside
Nen ayin badi dishkavellanu
I said I request you to go and change and wear proper shirt and come
Mariy neenu, neuvelli, manchi shirt eskundramani manojeshna
And he obeyed
Mariyayavudetchupi
So that is how we discipline, we should teach them, they do not know
Mariy aaritika, manu val kramashaksha nerpinchali, entikante aavishalvalu teredu, neenu stateskavellanapudu
Some people come with, you know, it is less than half pants, it is
Mariy Mariy
Abha, me keli uga delsus Ay eskona ochidu bochinadu
Mariy mokalakaka undadu pantu, kindikundadu, adi eskunavustana
Eupoi maamul pant eskaraman jepna
Nen poy maamul pant eskaman jepna
Oksaaro kadapul oku village
Mariy kadapul okramalu
Foreign ninchokpiladu
Foreign ninchokpiladu
Ward
Ward kodha mokalakaka pant esk
Streetlo votavute
Mariy streetlo
Oka musalammanindanta
Oka musalamadigindanta
Evinayna, gudde takku ayina
Evinayna, gudde takku ayinda
Why don't you wear proper dress?
Entikunu sarana dress
Why do you imitate them?
Entikua a lokastalnu anukaristavu
You know why? No, Americans can English, why they, why they wear it?
Mariy Amerikavalu, Englishvalu, entikavi eskuntaru
Ice fall is their ice, ice uttadi
Akkadavu var kmanchu padtadi
Ento manchu padtadi
Ento manchu padtadi
Andikanya adi astar payiki
Andikanya adi payikastar
Manaku mansulele, ginchule
Manak mansulele, ginchule
Adi oka fashion
Adi manaku oka fashion
Adi valaka avasarmayate, manaki fashion
Mariy adi valaka avasarmayate, adi manaki puru fashion ayipayi
Yeah, now they wear knickers
Mariy valu
In rainy season
Mariy varsha kalanlo, val nekkar leeskuntaru
Even now, everybody I find in our colony in Delhi, lot of people wear knickers feel they are Englishmen
Mariy maakali lo, Delhi lo poodujustan, prativokkala kodha nekkar leeskun, Englishman
Ayavu rainy season leeskuntaru
Valu varsha kalankaavutavu eskuntaru
Tadustarani
Tadustarani
Even now, manakadu fashion
Ipuru manakadu fashion
Bakwasaya, pura bakwas
Mariy anta kodha, mari padayipayinavu
Do not imitate the world
Mariy lokamunu mira anukarinchakandi
If you imitate the world, the righteousness won't be there
Mariy neuvu lokanikanaka anukariste, ayaka neethini la undadu
He will not be a righteous person
Neuvud neethi mantiriga undalevu
See, 1 Peter
Madhipetharu
Chapter 2
Marindadja
Verse 24
Mariyiravan4 vuchinam
You should live unto righteousness
Manamu chodin madhipetharu, redadja, 24 vuchinam Mana papumul visshamay chitani poy, neethi visshamay jivinchinatlu
Live unto righteousness
Neethi visshamay jivinchinatlu
Righteousness is very, 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 very important
Mariy neethi chala, chala pramukkamayinadi
You know why?
Entikana
I will tell you
Nen jepthan
Psalm 34
Kirtina mupai 4
Verse 15
Mariy padihena vuchinam
That is a very important verse
Mariy idi chala pramukkamayinadu
Which tells us how much it is important for us to be righteous in the sight of God
Devaniyaka drushlo, neethi mantiriga undaram, enta pramukkamayindu, maivakim japtavu
If you are not righteous
Neuvud neethi mantiriga undakupothi
However much you may pray
Nu enta pradhanchesinapadiki
However much you may fast and pray
Enta upavasamundi, pradhanchesinapadiki
Lord will not hear you
Prabhu nee pradhana vinadu
Ah, we have a song also
Manaku paata kodavundi
Ipuradu paata melaa
Ipuradu paata melae
Ee paata di?
Ee paata di?
Neethi mantula pradhana devudala kenchunu You understand that?
Meeku ida ardamayinda
Ardamayinda meeku?
Meekaradamayinda
Neethi mantula pradhana devudala kistadu
Neethi mantula pradhara devudala kistadu
Nu neethi manturaliva
Neuvud neethi manturaliva
Nu neethi manturuga
Neuvud neethi manturuga
Psalm 34 verse 15
Mariy kirtina mupai 4, padihena vuchinam
The eyes of the Lord are upon the righteous and his ears are open unto their cry
Kehava drushtid neethi mantilume dadu nadhi, ayana chavulu varim maralaku oggiyinnavi
Ayana chavulu
Ayana chavulu
Varim maralaku
Varim maralaku
Yavrim maralaku
Yavrim maralaku
Neethi mantula maralaku
Neethi mantila maralaku
Unless, it is a very serious matter
Idi chala tevaramayinadu
Unless and until you are a righteous person, however much you may pray, at the time of the food, or at the time of your examination, at the time of going out, outside the city, wherever, for whatever reason, you pray, unless and until you are righteous, God cannot hear a prayer
Kaavati neyaka jivitamilo, nuv e vissham korukupradhanchesina, mariyayaka parikshala koragani, nuv badi kavelti, e parishtu pradhanchesina, neuvud neethi mantiriga undakupothi, nee pradhana devudala kinchadu
You have to be righteous in the sight of God
Neuvud devani drushlo, neethi mantiriga undal
That is why what God says
Adede devani vaakim japtavu
Not only he has become our wisdom
Ayana mana jnannam matramayka
He has become our righteousness
Ayana mana neethi kodayinadu
You have to stay on that righteousness
Ayaka neethilo, manam nilichinadu
As you look unto the lamp of God
Manamu devani gorupillanu chustunapudu
You should examine yourself
Malam manam parikshinchikavu
Whether you are righteous in the sight of the lamp of God
Ayaka devani gorupilla drushlo, neuvud neethi mantiriga unnava
He has got seven eyes in the revelation, we will see tomorrow
Mariy reepodin chustam, ayanku yedu netralunattu manam
Oh, his eyes go to and fro throughout the whole world
Ayinaka kanulu, lokamantata kodha sancharistavu
Nothing is hidden from him
Ayinandi, eedi kodha daachabadaledu
The lamp of God is very, very divine
Mariy yaka devani gorupilla, chala, mari parloka sammanamayinadi
Ah, it is also a consuming fire
Mariy adi dahinchetvanti agni
Yesterday I said
Nen ardinam jepna
All the attributes of God, all the characteristics of the Lord Jesus Christ are culminated, consummated, in one term called the lamp of God
Yesu Kristu Pravuvara, birdilani, ayinaka pairlani kodha devani gorupilla, anne okadaantlo sammili tamayunay
Ah, ani imidi poyinadu
Ani imidi poyinay
Think about it more and more
Da neegurinchay inkana ekku ekku
That is why we are to do with that lamp of God
Aakannaanubatti, manam aak gorupilla vayipichodali
Ah, we read in Hebrew chapter 12, verse 29
Ebrilikrasanupatrika, panindadja, meravaitomidavuchinam
Be like a consuming fire
Ayana dahinchetvanti agni
That is why we should be very careful
Aakannaanubatti, manam chala jagartakaligundal
Examine ourselves
Malam manam parikshinchikunda
Never we are righteous in the sight of God
Manamu devani drushlo, neethi mantiriga unnama
Now see verse 17
Mariy padiheda vuchinam
Psalm 34, verse 17
Kirtina mupai 4, padiheda
The righteous cry and the Lord hears, what a nice statement The righteous cry and the Lord hears and delivers them out of all their troubles
Chodin mupai 4, neethi mantilu morapetika ehava aalakinchinu, varisramalaneetlo nuundi, varini vidipinchinu
Now think of it
Da neegurinchalalachinchandi
If there are any situations in your life where you were delivered from various stiff situations, when you prayed, if you have been delivered, that means at that point of time, you are righteous
Mari chodandi, nee jivitamilo vuchna kishthamayana parishtitu lo, nuv pradhanchesinapadu, a pradhanalunchi nuv vidipinchabadnavu ante, aakshanamalo nuv neethi mantiriga, neethi manturaliga unnava
Yeah, that is very good, well translated, so you should continue in that situation
Ayaka neethiye parishtitu lo, manu konasagalu
Many times our prayers are not answered
Chalasaalu, mana pradhallu, jawabvandukolayam
Because we are indifferent to the word of God
Entikana, devaniyaka vaakyaniki, vetchasangama
We sit in the presence of the Lord
Devani sannidilo manam kuchuntavu
But our thoughts are wandering in the world
Aite mana talamkalanni lokamlo sancharistay
God cannot do anything
Mari devu, itvandu variki, eemi chale
You have to focus your attention to the word of God
Neyaka, gamnikaka, devaniyaka vaakim medapetali
There is a serious warning
Mariy tevaramayana hacharekundi
In Proverbs 28, verse 9
Mariy kirtina, mariyiravan8, tomidi
Ah, Proverbs 28, verse 9
Mariy kirt, saamethalu, iravan8, tomidi
If you are indifferent to the word of God, your prayers are abomination in the sight of God
Chodandi, dharmasastramu vinakonda, chavini toliginchikunu, varni pradhana heyamo
Ah, you understand?
Meekaradamay
If you are a careless listener
Mariy neuvu nerlakshanga vinavadu vaitte
However much you may pray
Nu enta pradhanchesina
Your prayers would not be heard by him
Mariy devani chata, nee pradhallu, angikarinchabadavu, vinabadavu
And we hear, I kept on saying that, you know, when you phone somebody, you said, he is not responding to your call, call after some time
Mariy nen chepta, anta, chodandi, manu phone jastavu unnapudu, mariy meyaka callki, mari spandinchetle edan jawabvastad
Ah, same thing is happening
Mariy idede jarugavundhi
He is not responding to our call
Ayana mana callki, mari spandinchadamle
He is not responding to our prayers
Mana pradhankuka ayana pratispandinchidum
He is not answering our prayers
Mana pradhankuka jawab evudamle
Years may pass
Mariy savachalgarichipotana
Till he is not answering
Ayanapadiki ayana jawab
Or that you are responsible
Daaniki, neeve badju davu
Because you have not come onto a ground of righteousness
Entikana, neethi emlo nikiniu raaledu
The tragedy is
Mariy drushtkramans
Lord said I have become your righteousness
Mari Prabhu jepna, neene neethi annadu
But yet you don't appropriate that righteousness
Aite ayaka neethini, manam anvayinchikole, nevarga undanam
It is only the righteous person, when he prays, he hears
Mariy evraite, neethi mantiru pradhanchesinapadu, ayana angikarinchavu, aalakichavu
James chapter 5
Mariy yaakopatrika idaadja
James chapter 5
Yaakopatrika idaadja
Verse 16
Mariy padahara vuchinam
Confess your faults one to another and pray one for another, that he may be healed. The effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man availeth much
Chodandi, mi papumul okinitho okkudupukunadi, mir sasthupundanatlu, okinakorukokkudupradhanchchedi, neethi mantini vignyapana, mana porakkamayinaday, bohu balamakaladay indunu
Yeah, neethi mantini pradhana
Neethi mantini pradhana
So, may God help us to be righteous always, all through our life
Mana jivitaantakalamu, ayinayadu, mana neethi mantilu ga undanatlu, Prabhu manaku sahayam ched
So that we may be heard of him when we pray
Aka, aaritiga, epudu manam pradhanchesina, ayinadaanaya, mari vinunugaka
We may be accepted of him when we worship
Epurayite, manam aaradistam, apudu ayinadan, angikarinchinu
Otherwise, they are all empty words
Leenatlaite, ani kali martalu
Ah, without anything, many times people do lots of works also in the church
Mariy sangamlo, chala panlu, eemi lakunda chestavuntar
In Bhopal
Mariy Bhopallo
We had some meetings
Okkunikudikal jarekinay
One day we asked one local brother to share worship message
Mariy akkudunatanti, stanicahodhane, aaradana vartmanam punchkomanadigam
And then he was sharing
Ayana punchkuntanadu
Balla gudde japtavu
Balla gudde japtavu
His wife in the congregation is sitting and she is crying
Mariy ayinavayipuchu, sitana, barya congregationlo, samadhanlo, kuchundhi, edustavundhi
Ah, ayinavayipu, kuchunandi, edustavu
Vayipakadu kuchinidu edustavundhi
Pakka kuchunamadigindhi, endama, why are you crying?
Mariy apakadu kuchinam, me adigindhi, entikunu vedustavu
Ah, inkai aadu, modu bitin Konamadu, adi edustavu, adigindhi, inkai edupostu
Mariy ame, yavranayana edustavu, adiginti, inkai ekku vedustar, ala gameinkai, ekku aadu damalipet
Edistapadiki, amma, eendamma problem?
Eendamma samashanadig
And am eend jepin delsuna
Am meema jepin jesa
Ippudanu kotu ochinadu
Ippudanu kotu ochinadu
Chusinarani
Chusinarani
Ayana vaakim danjukodusavu
Akkadu vaakim danjukodusavu
Full pet nuji
Full pet manji
Ah, akadinidagirakutti
Indidagira, bata
Baga jadinchikotti
Baga jadichikotti
Eemi araganatavuchinadu
Eemi araganatavuchinadu
That is called hypocrisy
Idine, veshadarana
That is lack of wisdom
Mariy adi jnannamlo kodu
Lack of righteousness
Mariy neethilo kodu undi
How can you ever do it?
Mariy eyaritiga, neuvudanichaygal
How can you be a hypocrite?
Eyaritiga, neuvud veshadariga undavu
Such things should be stopped in order that prayers may be answered
Mariy mana pradhallu, angikarinchabadala ante, itvandivi mana jivitamilo, aapi vayali
When the righteous man prays, he hears
Mariy neethi mantiru pradhanchega, ayana aalakinchinu
Ah, we have to be righteous
Manamu neethi mantilu ga undal
How?
Elaga
As Job was righteous
Mariy Job eyaritiga, neethi mantiriga unnadu, alaga
Ah, that is, that is a very important subject that we have
Mariy idi chala pramukkamayinadu 20, amshamu
I will mention those things, then meditate, you, you meditate
Mariy aavishangatalu, neemiku, cheptanu, mirvatin janinchandi
Are you righteous as Job was righteous?
Mariy Job neethi mantiriga unnatlu, nuv neethi mantiriga unnava
Are you righteous as Noah was righteous?
Mariy Noah neethi mantiriga unnatlu, nuv neethi mantiriga unnava
Are you righteous as Abraham was righteous?
Abrahamu neethi mantiriga unnatlu, neethi mantiriga unnava
Are you righteous as David was righteous?
Mariy David neethiga unnatlu, nuv neethiga unnava
Concerning David, his enemy, Saul said that he is more righteous than him
Mariy David, shetrueyaka 20, Saul japtavuchinadu, ayana naakantae, neethi mantiru
Are you righteous as Elijah was righteous?
Mariy Elisha neethi mantiriga unnatu, nuv neethi mantiriga unnava
When he prayed, the fire came down and accepted the offering on Mount Carmel
Mariy pakarmeluparvathame dayana, pradhanchesinapadu, agni digi, ayaka, dhanabalini, aakatelnu, dahinchivesinu
That proves, that testifies that he is a righteous man
Adi, ayana neethi mantiru, adi rudhu chestavundhi
At one point of time
Oka sandarbhamlo
Solomon was also righteous
Mariy Solomon kodha neethi mantiru
He challenges by his life at that time
Mariy aasamelo, tan jivitamdaru, sawalchesina
Second Quran, chapter 7
Mariy redadinavutam talu
Then, when he prayed, fire came down from heaven and accepted the offering
Mariy akkada ayana pradhanchayga, parlokumunchi agni achya, agni akkada dahinchivesinu, bali
Are you like Solomon?
Mariy solomonla unnava
A righteous person
Mariy neethi mantiru vayna, Solomon
Are you like Joseph?
Mariy Joseph
Who was righteous?
Neethi mantirani Joseph
He ran away from the sinful situation
Mariy ayinayadu, chala papaakaramayana parishtitu undi
And concerning him, it was testified
Mariy ayinagurinchisaksham evabadindi
Genesis chapter 41, verse 38
Mariy adikandamu, nalpeyavatja, mupai enamidavuchinam
Pharaoh, Pharaoh King testified
Mariy anyudayinati, Pharaoh Raadu, sakshamichinadu
A man in whom the spirit of God is
Mariy devani, atmanevasistana, itvandivi, manshini, manam kanuganugalma
So, that is how he is a righteous person
Mariy aaritiga, ayana neethi mantiru
Are you righteous as Paul and apostles were righteous at that time?
Mariy Paulu, apostulu, adinalu, unnan, neethi mantilu, vayne, unnava
First Thessalonians
Madhutheslonika
Chapter 2
Redadja
First Thessalonians, chapter 2
Madhutheslonika, redadja
Verse 10
Mariy padavuchinam Madhutheslonikasanaupatika
Look into the Bible please.
Bible tell chodandi. Ameme visvasulamayana meyadita. Enta bhakti gano, neeti gano, anindhim gano pravartinchitamo. Dhani ki miru sakshilo devudu no sakshi.
Can we say that?
Manamudini chappagalam.
Neenu neetimantuni miru sakshilo.
Neenu neetimantuni miru sakshilo.
Atten, ventre, enno soral baidhko, soore nu adhiyeshna, kada adhiyeshna.
Maru, ala manu ante, enno adhiyeshna, adhiyeshna, enno soral baidhko.
Now he is giving a open testimony.
Ee na bahiranga sakshamista.
He writes to Jesuit believers.
Teslo neeka visvasukarastu.
How holyly, how justly, how righteously, how unblameably we behaved among you.
Maru, meyadita enta bhakti gano, neeti gano, anindhim gano pravartinchitamo meeketelsu.
For that you are the witnesses and God is witnesses.
Dhani ki miru sakshilo devu koda sakshi anjepnada.
So what would the spirit of God will tell?
Maru devu neeka atmanaki em jepthandi.
He had to give a commendation or certificate to you.
Maru, meeku okabirudigane certificategane vallante.
Are you a righteous person?
Niuv neetimantirigava.
If you are a righteous person.
Niuv neetimantirigavunte.
You would be a prayerful man, prayerful woman.
Nu pradhana parudainatuvanti vektiga, pradhana parudainatuvanti strieganu untav.
What is the best quality of Apostle Paul?
Apostle aina powli akka manchi lakshana meyadi.
He is a man of prayer.
Aina pradhana parud.
He always prayed for the believers.
Maru ellapudu visvasukarakaina pradhana.
And he said, I have you in my heart.
Neenu mimel naa hruddhamelo unchukunna annadu.
Concerning him, the first testimony was.
Maru aina gurinchimattamati saksham.
In Acts chapter nine verse eleven.
Apostle kariyalu tomdaajam padukundachin.
Behold, he prayed.
Idigo atadu pradhana cheyachinadu.
Concerning you, what testimony Holy Spirit will give?
Ni gurinchie parishudhatma devu ye saksham evagalu.
Behold, he watches TV.
Bego idigo aina TV joustavannaadu.
TV, not the TB.
Aksham, TB.
One Bengalis, they have no V. Wa V, Bengali, awitsol.
Maru Bengali basilo wa V anedha, avala akshala ledu.
So they call TV as TB.
Maru TV ni TB and pelist.
TB under all.
TB antar.
Watcher, you know, official watchers untakada.
Office lo watchers untakada.
They cannot call watchers.
Valu watchersan peleval.
They say bochers.
Bochers and pelist.
For V, they call B, ba.
Maru, yendu kada V ane akshram valu konnado, dhani B and pelist.
One accountant purchased the TV.
Okka accountant TV ni konnadu.
When he entered the hall.
Aina hallok pravesin.
He was declaring to everybody.
Maru aina prativalta chepnada.
Hey, I have purchased TV, I have purchased TV antan.
Neenu TB purchase jasanu, TB purchase jasanan.
Then I realized, yes, really it is a TB.
Neenu apur grahinchan, nizanga adi TB ay.
Ah, it is a very dangerous thing.
Maru adi chala pramadakaram.
So behold, he watches TV.
Maru idigo atadu TV joustavannaadu.
Behold, he is busy with his cellphone.
Maru idigo atadu cellphoneto busyga.
Somebody said.
Maru yavro jepnar.
If you can treat Bible as you treat your cellphone, you will be a blessed person in the world.
Maru, niuv cellphoneto yella gavaharistanaavo, alaga nu Bible to gana gavaharistenu, ento aashiruvadenchabanu vektavato.
Nu enta sanihitasammanangaligi cellphoneto untavo, a vidanga, ento sanihitasammanangaligi Bible to undi, nu ento danyuduvaavata.
Maru, niuv cellphoneto enta sanihitamayana sammanangkaligentav, ante sanihitamayana sammanam, maru Bible to kaligundi, ento danyuduvaavata.
Papa kuchanu, yen na nelvadu, andanu dustrav.
Amma papa kuchanu, kucha amma, kucha.
Point, na kuchandi.
Miri anakelpe kuchandi.
Sit down, please sit down.
Kuchandi.
Or else you go out.
Lackvate baidhko elpandi.
So, God said, I am your wisdom.
Maru devu jepnada, neenu mey jnana mo.
The question is, do you have wisdom?
Aite presshan, neeku jnana munda.
God said, I am your righteousness.
Devu jepnada, neenu neetii.
I dwell in your heart.
Neenu mey hruddhamelo nevasistav.
Do you have that wisdom, do you have that righteousness?
Niuv atuvanti jnana ni, atuvanti neetni kaligunnava.
Ask yourself.
Nienu, niuve pressinchiko.
You be your judge.
Maru, ni, nyaya adipati, niuve.
And I will urge you, request you humbly in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, ask the Lord.
Maru neenu Yesu Kristu Pravvaare naamulo, maru dene thumthadutunna, maru niuv prabhu nadu.
Oh Lord, give me that heavenly wisdom.
Oh Pravva, adaivikumayana jnana muna konugre.
Oh Lord, help me that I may be always, ever, every time, be righteous in thy sight.
Oh Pravva, neenu ellapudu, niyadita neetimantirigavunnu natlu, naaku sahayamchim.
Then Lord will help you.
Apur prabhu neeku sahayamjastha.
Shall we pray?
Pradhana jescuntam.
Our loving heavenly Father.
Ma preemagala parlokuputhandri.
Our gracious and wonder working God.
Ma kropagala adbu thukari mulichay deva.
We thank thee for the word ministered unto us.
Parichariyacheyavanna devu vaakyana bati meekondanal.
Help us that we may have that wisdom from above and righteousness in our lives.
Pravva paininchayochi, jnana mey kaligundinatlu, anetii mey kaligundinatlu, mak sahayamchim.
And as we break and then we have second session, be with us.
Pravva, mey ekvanta viramich, renda section kaligunthundiga sahayamchindi.
Pray with thanksgiving in Jesus precious name.
Yesu Kristu Pravvaare prasastamayana naamulo, krithakita porukongada gadekuvadukunch nam, tandri, amen. Daiches manu andramu lechnelvadutamu, lechnelvadi, madhiti part paadukuntam. Ee madhiti part paadine ventine rendova Bible patanu, ee madhiti bagamulo, renda session Bible patanu kaligundam. Ilopu miru kalakurchal, justu, kindi bagamulo sisterski brotherski washroom sunai. Alane pay bagamulo washroom sunai, miru pay kaina, kindi bagan kaina, sisterski brotherski separatekveer veer gunai. Miru veli, kalakurchal jescunki, eduna water thagalanati thaguchin. Ilop partu vado lechirindi, ekadu kuchintan, chepthunna pidda automatic raaval kada, nenne jepnada. Daiches, madhiti part paadukunnam, part sanki vakati, na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Part sanki vakati, ausar manukuntene vellandi, ledenkunti, matapati lechnelvadi, mala, prashanthukkade kuchu. Lechnelvadi paadukunnam, ausar unnanukunti, elrendi, ledenkunti, part paadutu, ekidavunndi. Part sanki vakati.
Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Aramunu viiri, uvi ke tenchi. Siluvalo pranam, naa penchi TV. Aramunu viiri, uvi ke tenchi. Siluvalo pranam, naa penchi TV. Niratamulu, nanu kadi giti vi. Niratamulu, nanu kadi giti vi. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Apapamula, chamiyinchi TV. Trematonanu, arunenchi TV. Apapamula, chamiyinchi TV. Trematonanu, arunenchi TV. Devu niintilo nanu chichi TV. Devu niintilo nanu chichi TV. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Ni marka pulu, vadali pothi ni, piduvaka nanu. Edakite chiti vi, ni marka pulu. Vadali pothi ni, piduvaka nanu. Edakite chiti vi, sahavasamulu, nanu chichi TV. Sahavasamulu, nanu chichi TV. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Upadavamula nunni, kaapadi TV. Aranabaya pulu, kolaginchi TV. Upadavamula nunni, kaapadi TV. Aranabaya pulu, kolaginchi TV. Ni shaktito nanu pratikinchi TV. Ni shaktito nanu pratikinchi TV. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Na matukai te, pratukutakriste, savaitenaku, ento laavam. Na matukai te, pratukutakriste, savaitenaku, ento laavam. Yesu tonooda, naa ken tonelu. Yesu tonooda, naa ken tonelu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Manu pratikina, prabhu ni korake, chani poi nanu. Ayanakorake, mahamu pratikina, prabhu ni korake, chani poi nanu. Ayanakorake, niratamuhannamu, Yesu nivaramu. Niratamuhannamu, Yesu nivaramu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Aramunu nunni, urashatamuto, arayuno Yesu. Arpatamuto, aramunu nunni. Umurashatamuto, arayuno Yesu. Arpatamuto, kanamu gamanamu, Yesu padedamu. Kanamu gamanamu, Yesu padedamu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Aparamu, nibalamu. Agamnyamu, nijnana mu. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu. Na Yesu Prabhu nakushtutistotramulu. Na priyaavibhu nakusmahimagana talu.
Kindly settle down.
Daiches kuchanandi.
Shall we pray?
Pradhana jescuntam.
Our loving heavenly Father.
Ma preemagala parlokuputhandri.
Our gracious and wonder working God.
Ma kropagala adbu thukari mulichay deva.
We thank thee for the word ministered unto us in the first session.
Madhiti sectionlo maaku parichariyacheyavanna, ni vaakyana bati meekondanal.
You will now be with us.
Pravva, ipudu koda, miru mak sahayamchim.
Thou art the true and the living God.
Niuv sajeevayana, devam galiguna sachivantrayana.
And thy word also is truth.
Niuv vaakyamukoda sachemu.
Minister unto us that word of truth.
Maru, a sachya vaakyamunu, maaku parichariyacheyamani pradhistav.
So that who may be built up in thy faith through the word of grace.
Maru, a rithiga, kropa vaakyamudhara, visvasumlo mey katabadunatlu sahayamchim.
Thank thee for all the dear ones who are here with much sacrifice.
Maru, madhiti dinamnunchi, ento chaak samarpunato, ekadu vana varni bati meekondanam.
So Lord bless every one of them.
Oh Pravva, malu pratyvakani aashiruvadinchandi.
So Lord continue to speak to us.
Pravva, yadatega, miru matamatlaadurandi.
Pray with thanksgiving in Jesus precious name.
Yesu Kristu Pravvaare prasastamayana naamulo, krithakita porukongada gadekuvadukunch nam, tandri, amen.
When we think of the Lamb of God.
Yedu yete manam devu ne guripela gurinchie alochistamo.
We think of that beloved Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Maru, primayana rakshakudu, Yesu Kristu Pravvaan gurinchie alochistam.
When we come to him, what blessings that we have.
Manam, aina yedu kuchinapudu, etuvanti aashirvadamil manam kaligunchunam.
And we rejoice in those blessings.
Manam, aashirvadamilo anandistavunchunam.
On his part, he has bestowed upon us wonderful blessings.
Maru, aina pakshaana, manakvaraku, ani aashirvadaalu, aina anugrahinchinadu.
We have to appropriate them.
Aite aashirvadaalu, manajivataniki anvayinchikavali.
We have to really enjoy them, experience them.
Avi manajivatunlo anubuvinchii, anandinchali.
That is where we are lacking.
Maru, ee vishunlo, manam koduvakaligunchunam.
We need to realize that.
Dhani grahinchali.
And ask him.
Maru prabhu nadagali.
God, as much as I want to appropriate thy blessings, I am not able to do so.
Pravva, neenu entavarku, aashirvadaalu, na jivatal anvayinchikavalo, antavarku, neenu anvayinchikalekpothavunna.
And as much as I want to walk with thee, I am not able to do so.
Pravva, entavarku, neenu niito nadavalo, antavarku, neenu nadavalekpothav.
As much as I want to walk worthy of thy name, I am not able to maintain that discipline.
Pravva, ni, niuk taginatuka, entavarku nadavalaankuntanano, a nadiyacheydantlo, kramashikshan, neenu kaligulekpo.
But I am not able to have that faith by which I could enjoy my spiritual life.
Na atme jivatumlo santoshinchetvanti, a visvasan, neenu kaligundalakpothavunna.
Everything in Christian life happens by faith.
Maru, Christa jivatunlo, pratidi koda, visvasum darane jarugutavundi.
No faith, there is nothing.
Maru, visvasum lakpothi, inkayemi ledu.
Entire Christendom rests on one word called faith.
Maru, Christa jivatamanta koda, maru visvasamani okka padammeda adharapadind.
Without seeing, we accepted him.
Aina manam chodakaye, aina endu visvasamuncham.
And he has given us joy unspeakable and full of glory.
Maru, chapana sakhyam, mahima ikthamayana santoshan, aina manu konugrahinchin.
So in order to retain that joy unspeakable and full of glory, we should continue to have that faith in God.
A chapana sakhyam kaani mahima ikthamayana santosham, manalo yadatega, nilichin dalante, yadatega, a visvasumlo, manam konasagali.
Then only he will become our wisdom.
Appudu matram, aina manu jnana avtad.
Then only he will become our righteousness.
Appudu matram, aina manu neetavat.
Oh such a Christian life is a blessed life.
Ituvanti, Christa jivatamu, aashiruvadinchabadinatuvanti, jivatam.
Christian life is a life of practice.
Christa jivatam, anedhi kriyaporukumayana, vavaharikumayana jivatam.
Ah, there is a very, very important thing.
Idi chala, chala, pramukkamaynatuvanti.
There was one brother, Amurtraz in our midst.
Maru, saavudra, Amurtrazgar, manam majlo undevad.
He was a senior servant of God.
Aina senior divsavakudu.
In one convocation.
Okka convocationlo.
All the messages were given by him only.
Maru, ani vartamanaalu, aynike yuvadai.
He is a very wonderful person.
Maru, aina adbu thamayana vektii.
A pious, righteous person.
Maru, bhakti gala, neetiparudainavad.
He was an engineer in navy.
Maru, navylo engineerga pani jessadu.
He resigned his job and served the Lord.
Maru, tanu ujjagani rajinama chesit devu ne savakachadu.
And one day, he was going by a train, first class compartment.
Maru, mattamari, oksaari, first class compartment, trainline, prayamjess.
His luggage in his hands, he got into the compartment.
Maru, itana chethillo, yaka luggage patkuni, a compartmentlo pravesinchadu.
As he entered into the coop, you know, coop means there are only four butts in that.
Maru, ah, coop antara, aknaalgu bartal untai.
First class, that is a sort of room.
Maru, adi okka room laga untundi.
You can have a door closed and your four butts inside.
Maru, niuv a door close cheskochaa, lopela naalgu bartal untai.
So when he entered, already three people were there.
Maru, aina andloke velle lopae, muguru vektil unna randlo.
And then he is the fourth person.
Maru, ee na naalgu vektii.
As the train moved.
Maru, train kadultavundaga.
And one of them took out a suitcase and kept it in the center and put playing cards.
Maru, okka vektii suitcase chesi, majlo petti, packa tathamalubetta.
Ah, packa, he distributed for the four.
Amari, aaka packa mukkalu, punchisnada.
And all the three picked up the, you know, playing cards.
Maru, mugilna muguru, aaka packa mukkalu tiskunnavaru.
And they said, it is a long journey, we can while our time.
Maru, valu, entikantidi, doraprayanangabati, maru samiam irithiga gadupdamaankunnav.
And then this brother Amurtraz did not pick up the cards.
Maru, Amurtrazgar, a cardlu, maru, packa mukkalu tiskole.
Then they asked him.
Then aina adigarvaru.
Sir, kindly pick up your cards, we will commence praying.
Ah, manu kalisa aadavam, miru koda, packa mukkalu tiskomannad.
Then he was sitting like this.
Aina ellach chethil katikunchunnav.
He said, I have no hands.
Aina annadu, nak chethil levu annad.
What?
Yenti?
Eh, what you are saying?
Nu yen jepthavunna.
Then he said.
Aina jepnada.
Then they said, you have your hands, why are you saying I have no hands?
Maru, niuk chethil unnae kada, chethil levan, alla jepthanav, annadigar.
He said, they are not mine.
Maru, ee chethil naavikaavannad.
Brother, o gavraga, they could not understand what he is saying.
Sarvathavalki, addankaladu, enti kela jepnada, ani.
He said, these hands are not mine.
Ee chethil, na chethil kaadu.
Then they found, he is a very interesting person.
Maru, aina, maru, aashaktikaramayana vektiga, valu konugunnav.
Then they said.
Sarvathavalki jepnada.
Okay, we will not play cards.
Maru, ipudu, mey, manam packa tathamo.
Now you look to be a very interesting person.
Nu chala aashaktikaramayana vektiga konabadda.
Having hands, you are saying no hands.
Niuk chethil kaligundu koda, chethil levan jepnau.
And then you say they have been purchased by someone.
Maru, neenu, vere vektidhara konabaddan anjepnau.
Neenu, a chethil vereval konesukunnav.
Vereval chethil konesnara.
You found to be a very interesting person.
Nu ento aashaktikaramayana vektiga konabadda.
Tell me about you.
Maru, ni gurinchii, pudu maakijepnada.
In the rest of the journey.
Maru, mugilna prayanam.
He gave his testimony.
Aina sakshyam banjukunnav.
He preached the word.
Maru, devu ne vaakyana.
They were astonished.
Var aashirepoyar.
That is how he was a testimony in an unknown place.
Maru, a rithiga, tanuku telinavanti, prantamalo, aina sakshigaavunna.
Nobody was there watching him.
Maru, yavro koda, aina gamnunchitam ledu.
Now what today's believer would do?
Maru, ee dinalo, visvasalu, em jastadu.
Aina sthanamlo ununte.
Aina sthanamlo ununti, em jast.
Ekad yavru timothile edle.
Ekad timothi yavru leerle.
Yavru leerle.
Ekad yavru leerle.
Come on, yavru chodamleka.
Yavru chodamle.
Yavruka adestamante.
Yavru kna adestamante.
Many people do that.
Maru, chala mandi irithiga jastha.
Many do that.
Chala mandi ellach jastanav.
But Amurtraz did not do it.
Aite, Amurtrazgar, alla cheladu.
Because he is a purchased possession of God.
Enti kanega, aina prabhu chaita, konabadinavadu.
He had been purchased by the blood of the Lord.
Aina, maru, Yesu Pravvaareka raktham chaita, konabaddavad.
And he practiced that purchase.
Maru, aaka, konnadani, aina konasaginchinadu.
That is why you could testify, what I have is not mine.
Maru, aina jepnada, neenu yedu yete kaligunna, adi naadikadan chappagali.
That is how he was a testimony among those unknown people in the compartment.
Maru, a rithiga, a compartmentlo, tanu yereganatuvanti, prazalamajja sakshigaavunna.
It is because of which he had an opportunity to give testimony and also share the word of God.
Maru, adi, aynaku, maru, saksham chappadani, vaakyam punchikodan, kaavkashamachin.
And I heard afterwards, he took their names and he said, we will pray for him.
Maru, tarvata, maru, neenu vinanu, valu peril koda tiskunnav, neemikvaraku pradhana jastan anjepnada.
Oh, that is how we should conduct ourselves.
Maru, ee rithiga, manam pravartinchali.
Show forth God's glory, God's power and God's love.
Maru, devu neeka mahima, devu neeka shakti, devu neeka premanu, manam chupinchali.
Show forth God's power.
Devu neeka shaktini chupinchali.
It is done, who will be a blessed person.
Appudu manam, aashiruvadinchabadina vektilavatam.
Then his wisdom becomes ours.
Appudu, aina jnana, manan jnanaavutundi.
Then his righteousness becomes ours.
Aina akka neetii, manan neetavutundi.
Why do you think, brother Baxing, when he prays?
Maru, manam Baxinggaro pradhana jessinapudu, entiku manam illa.
His prayers are answered.
Aina pradhana lo, jawavu pundinavani, manam entika alochistam.
Ah, his prayers are answered.
Aina pradhana ku jawavul pundinadu.
There was not a prayer that was not answered when he prayed.
Maru, aina pradhana chesinapudu, jawavu pandalainatuvanti, okka pradhana koda ledu.
In critical situations.
Maru, ento kristamaynatuvanti, paristitulokoda.
He prayed and God answered his prayer.
Aina pradhanchika, devu, aina pradhana alakinchinad.
Once, he was sitting in his room.
Oksaari, aina, aina roomlo unnaadu.
One gentleman comes to him.
Okka vektii, aina dagirukachadu.
Brother, kindly pray for me.
Brother, kindly pray for me.
My landlord will come and ask me rent, but I have no money to pay.
My landlord will come and ask me rent, but I have no money to pay.
Ah, he will make a lot of hambuk, a lot of problems for me.
Ah, he will make a lot of hambuk, a lot of problems for me.
Kindly pray for me.
Kindly pray for me.
Then brother Baxing prayed for him.
Then brother Baxing prayed for him.
And then he was going away.
And then he was going away.
Then Lord told him.
Then Lord told him.
What you have, the general of give it to him.
What you have, the general of give it to him.
Then brother Baxing said.
Then brother Baxing said.
Lord, that is my fare for Ajmere, for going to Ajmere.
Lord, that is my fare for Ajmere, for going to Ajmere.
Then Lord said.
Then Lord said.
It is my money.
It is my money.
You give it.
You give it.
And then he calls him.
And then he calls him.
Brother, brother, come.
Brother, brother, come.
My Lord asked me to give you this.
My Lord asked me to give you this.
And what he had kept for the ticket for Ajmere, he has given that money.
And what he had kept for the ticket for Ajmere, he has given that money.
That was sufficient for that rent for that month.
That was sufficient for that rent for that month.
So that man went rejoicing.
So that man went rejoicing.
Where Baxing was waiting.
Where Baxing was waiting.
And then he has to go to the station.
And then he has to go to the station.
But he does not have money.
But he does not have money.
He does not have money for the tickets.
But he does not have money for the tickets.
But right time when he had to leave the, for the station.
But right time when he had to leave the, for the station.
He took up the suitcase and upro, he went to the station.
He took up the suitcase and upro, he went to the station.
See, that is how he had faith in God.
See, that is how he had faith in God.
Because God asked him to give that money to him.
Because God asked him to give that money to him.
And also same God told him to go to Ajmere and preach the word.
And also same God told him to go to Ajmere and preach the word.
That is why he believed.
That is why he believed.
God told Abraham.
God told Abraham.
I will bless you.
I will bless you.
Not in Ishmael, but through Isaac.
Not in Ishmael, but through Isaac.
But then God asked Isaac to be crucified, but sacrificed.
But then God asked Isaac to be crucified, but sacrificed.
Ah, where he was to be blessed through him, he said, give him this thing, you know, sacrifice.
But Abraham was very sure.
But Abraham was very sure. You read Hebrews chapter eleven, verse seventeen and nineteen.
You read Hebrews chapter eleven, verse seventeen and nineteen. You read Hebrews chapter eleven, verse seventeen and nineteen. You read Hebrews chapter eleven, verse seventeen and nineteen. You read Hebrews chapter eleven, verse seventeen and nineteen. You read Hebrews chapter eleven, verse seventeen and nineteen. You read Hebrews chapter eleven, verse seventeen and nineteen. You read Hebrews chapter eleven, verse seventeen and nineteen.
See, he knew that even if I sacrifice him, he will raise him from the dead.
See, he knew that even if I sacrifice him, he will raise him from the dead.
See, he knew that even if I sacrifice him, he will raise him from the dead.
See, he knew that even if I sacrifice him, he will raise him from the dead.
Very bad.
Very bad.
So Abraham believed.
So Abraham believed.
With that confidence and faith, he was prepared to sacrifice Isaac.
With that confidence and faith, he was prepared to sacrifice Isaac.
So brother Baxing knew.
So brother Baxing knew.
He never knew how, but he will go to Ajmere.
He never knew how, but he will go to Ajmere.
Now, he does not have money to go.
Now, he does not have money to go.
But he went to the station to go to Ajmere.
But he went to the station to go to Ajmere.
Many times he shared when he gave the word, I have been hearing him since nineteen fifty-three.
Many times he shared when he gave the word, I have been hearing him since nineteen fifty-three.
And he goes to the station.
And he goes to the station.
And sat on the bench.
And sat on the bench.
Waiting to purchase a ticket.
Waiting to purchase a ticket.
But he does not have money.
But he does not have money.
Now, time is approaching, train was to come.
Now, time is approaching, train was to come.
At such a time.
At such a time.
One man comes there.
One man comes there.
Brother Baxing, praise the Lord.
Brother Baxing, praise the Lord.
Brother, so and so asked me to give you this envelope.
Brother, so and so asked me to give you this envelope.
One brother in the city prayed and God led him to give this envelope to him.
One brother in the city prayed and God led him to give this envelope to him.
So he sent somebody to give him.
So he sent somebody to give him.
That is how he got that money.
That is how he got that money.
Enough money to go to Ajmere.
Enough money to go to Ajmere.
Such things, innumerable things happened.
Such things, innumerable things happened.
Innumerable things.
Innumerable things.
Once they were going late to the train.
Once they were going late to the train.
Everybody was worried, brother Baxing will miss the train.
Everybody was worried, brother Baxing will miss the train.
Cars they were taking, they were all murmuring.
Cars they were taking, they were all murmuring.
Brother Baxing said.
Brother Baxing said.
The train cannot leave without me.
The train cannot leave without me.
I understand.
I understand.
You understand.
You understand. Train, I am not going, train will arrive.
That is the faith that he had.
That is the faith that he had.
He was very close to the heart of God.
He was very close to the heart of God.
He talked to him as he talked to his neighbor.
He talked to him as he talked to his neighbor.
Because he was a righteous man.
Because he was a righteous man.
He was in the central will of God.
He was in the central will of God.
Nothing less than God's will, he will do it.
Nothing less than God's will, he will do it.
Ah, Elijah said.
Ah, Elijah said.
On Mount Carmel.
On Mount Carmel.
There is a wonderful situation.
There is a wonderful situation.
There was a great challenge for him.
There was a great challenge for him.
There he prayed.
There he prayed.
First Kings chapter eighteen, verse thirty-six.
First Kings chapter eighteen, verse thirty-six.
First Kings chapter eighteen, verse thirty-six.
Two chapters, Bible, read.
Two chapters, Bible, read.
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 Hey, you should respectfully hold the Bible.
Hey, you should respectfully hold the Bible.
I have demonstrated how some people.
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 Sometimes with left hand also.
Sometimes with left hand also.
Ah, you know, very, very bad.
That is very, very tough.
We should maintain discipline.
We should maintain discipline.
In the sangam, in the worship, in the place where you go, they watch us.
In the sangam, in the worship, in the place where you go, they watch us.
And then brother said, it will not go without me.
And then brother said, it will not go without me.
And then when he went, the train was late for ten minutes.
And then when he went, the train was late for ten minutes.
Another time. It is a very, very interesting thing.
It is a very, very important thing.
Why I am sharing this?
Why I am sharing this?
To inculcate faith in your heart towards God.
To inculcate faith in your heart towards God.
He wants to go by flight.
He wants to go by flight.
Then he went.
Then he went.
Flight has already took off.
Flight has already took off.
Then he said to the people.
Then he said to the people.
I am going by that flight only.
I am going by that flight only.
Then the other said.
Then the other said.
Brother, that is already taken off.
Brother, that is already taken off.
He said, it will come back.
He said, it will come back.
Really, it came back.
Really, it came back.
There was a very rich lady.
There was a very rich lady.
Who forgot her ring in the bathroom in Hyderabad airport.
Who forgot her ring in the bathroom in Hyderabad airport.
She is a very rich lady belonging to a Nizam's family.
She is a very rich lady belonging to a Nizam's family.
She forgot that ring.
She forgot that ring.
And then she told the air hostess and she conveyed to the pilots.
And then she told the air hostess and she conveyed to the pilots.
They recognized that rich lady.
They recognized that rich lady.
Very important lady.
Very important lady.
She is V V I P, very, very important person.
She is very, very important person.
Then pilot, when it was going, it took a turn.
Then pilot, when it was going, it took a turn.
And came back to the airport.
And came back to the airport.
It is a miracle.
It is a miracle.
God made that lady to forget that ring for the sake of brother Baxing.
आमिकी चेसनाट
हां अर्थमात्य
अर्थमात्य
डेट इज आहो गॉड वर्क्स ऑन ऑल बिहाफ
ई रीतिका देवड़ू मन पक्षाना
इट इज इट इज नॉट अन कट्टुकथा
इधि कट्टुकट्टा काद
इट जस्ट रियली हैपन
इधि वास्तविकंगा
ब्रेडरन बिट्टेस्ट डेट
मारे सहोदरल तर्दपाट उन्नवार
दे आर टेलिंग एवरीवेयर वेयरवेयर दे गो
वाले एकड़कड़ के वेलिना वेलिना प्रतिशारी दिनी पंचकुंटा उन्नदवार
सो व्हाट इज डी कंक्लुजन ऑफ डी होल मैटर
मारे ई अक्का दिनी अक्का शाराम सुमेंटी
डी लैंप ऑफ गॉड डेट वी वर्शिप डेट वी फॉलो वी हैव फैलोशिप डी ट्रो और डी लिविंग गॉड
मनमो ये गोरपिल्लनाईते मनमो वेम्बडिस्ताव उन्नामो सहवासम जेस्ताव उन्नामो आ गोरपिल्ला सजीवमयना जयमगलिगिना देवड़ू
ट्रस्ट हिम
आइन यंदू नमकुमच्छुम
हाउ फेथ इन हिम
आइन यंदू विश्वासमच्छुम
लॉर्ड एंड मार्क 11:22
मार्क पदकुंड इरवेरिंदलो
हाउ फेथ इन गॉड
देवनी यंदू विश्वासमच्छुडी
यू वी हाउ फेथ इन गॉड
नी वो देवनी यंदू विश्वासमच्छते
अन इमेजिनेबल थिंग्स विल हैपन
नी वो ओहिंचले नेट वंटी संगतल जरुगिताई
हां यू कांट इवन अंडरस्टैंड हाउ थिंग्स वुड हैपन
मारे ई रीतिका संगतल जरिगिना यो नु अर्थम जेस्कोले
व्हेन आई वाज़ प्रेचिंग अन वर्ड
नेनु देवन वाक्यम बोधिंचे दापु
1980
पंथम दंदला यनबयो सोचलो
आई वाज़ प्रेचिंग फ्रॉम एक्स ऑफ 15 वर्ड 25
मारे अपोसिल कार्यमलो पदिहन अज्जयम 65 वचन मिंची नेनु बोधिस्तून
इन इंग्लिश इट इज वर्ड 26
मारे इंग्लिशलो 64 वचनमुंदी
मेन डेट हैव हजार्डेड देयर लाइफ फॉर डी नेम ऑफ लॉर्ड जीजस क्रिस्ट
यस क्रिस्ट प्रभुवार एक नाममु करकु तम्मुन तामु अपगिन्चुकुन्नवार
व्हेन आई वाज़ गिविंग डेट वर्ड
नेनु आ वाक्यान्नी पंचकुंचुंडगा
आई फेल्ट समथिंग वाज़ गोइंग आउट ऑफ मी
मारे नालोंची येदो वेल्टुनाटलो नेना
देयर वाज़ स्पॉन्टेनियस वर्ड कमिंग आउट
मारे वकदान वेम्बडी वकती वाक्यम अला वच्चेस्ताव
एंड डेट हिंदी ट्रांसलेट इज अन वंडरफुल ट्रांसलेटर
मारे हिंदी ट्रांसलेटर चला अद्भुतंगा माइन ट्रांसलेटर
वंडरफुल वी वर हेल्प्ड बाय डी मिनिस्ट्री ऑफ वर्ड ऑफ गॉड
देवन एक वाक्य परिचल अद्भुतंगा नक सहायम जेस्ताव
आई वाज़ ट्राइंग अबाउट डी सैक्रिफाइज ऑफ अपोसिल्स ऑफ होल्ड
मारे अपोसिललो चागम गुरिंची समर्पण गुरिंची नेनु माटलाडताव
आई वाज़ ट्राइंग अबाउट डी सैक्रिफाइज ऑफ डानियल, शद्रक, मिशेक एंड अभिन्नोस
मारे डानियल समर्पण गुरिंची, शद्रक, मिशेक, अभिन्न एक समर्पण गुरिंची
निजान जपनी परलो निजान जपन
माटलाडताव
देवरो डानियल, शद्रक, मिशेक, अभिन्न
डानियलू, शद्रक, मिशेक, अभिन्न
एंड आई वाज़ अलसो ट्राइंग अबाउट डी स्टीफन, स्टीफन वो वाज़ किल्ड बाय स्ट्रोन
मारे रालतो कोटबड़ नेट वंटी स्टीफन सैक्रिफाइज गुरिंची कोड़ा माटलाडन
सो आई वाज़ सेइंग आते रिस्क ऑफ देयर लाइफ दे प्रेच डी गॉस्पिल
मारियका प्राणाल पनंगा पेटी सुवार्तन प्रकटिंचनार अंजेपन
व्हेन आई वाज़ ट्राइंग अबाउट डेयर सैक्रिफाइज
मारियका चागम गुरिंची माटलाडतुन
देयर वाज़ डी इनर वॉइस विथिन माय हॉट हो व्हो व्हो डू
मारे नालो कंतरंग एक स्वरम इनबढतुंदी नी गुरिंचे एंटी
हां यू ट्राक अबाउट डेयर सैक्रिफाइज
नी वो मारी समर्पण गुरिंची माटलाडत
हो व्हो डू योर सैक्रिफाइज
नी अक्का समर्पण एंटी
एंड डेट वाज़ पंक्ट्रिवेटिंग इन माय हॉट
ना हृदयमलो आज प्रेयर पिस्ताव
मीटिंग वाज़ ओवर
कुड़िकाई पे इंदी
बेरिडिक्सन वी वेंट होम
मारे आशीर्वादम इच्छनाम मिंटिके वेल्प
आई टोल्ड माय वाइफ
नेनु ना भारी तो चपन
हाय आई इट लुक्स डेट गॉड इज कॉलिंग मी फॉर हिट वर्क
मारे देवड़ू तन पनिकोरके ननु पिलिस्तुनार अन्नक अनपिस्ताव
व्हेन आई वाज़ गिविंग डी वर्ड दिस क्वेश्चन वाज़ कमिंग इन माय हॉट
नेनु देवन वाक्यम पंचकुंचुंडगा ई अक्का प्रश्न नक वच्चिंदी
यू आर ट्राइंग अबाउट डेयर सैक्रिफाइज हो व्हो डू योर सैक्रिफाइज
नेनु मारी समर्पण गुरिंची माटलाडताव उन्ते नी समर्पण एंटी देव नातो माटलाडन
देन माय वाइफ सेड
तरवत ना भारी चप्पिंदी
हाय आई व्हेन यू वर गिविंग वर्ड आई अलसो हैव डी सेम फीलिंग
हाय आई नी वाक्यान्न चप्पे दापु अधे रीतिका नीक अलाग अनपिंचिंदा अलाक नाक कोड़ा अनपिंचिंदी अन्नदी
देन सी सेड
तरवत आमी चप्पिंदी
इफ यू आर वेरी शोर डेट इज गॉड्स कॉलिंग देन यू रिजाइन आई विल अलसो रिजाइन सी वाज़ डी टीचर इन आंग्रेज स्कूल वी विल रिजाइन बोथ ऑफ अस रिजाइन वी विल सर्व डी लॉर्ड
मारे आम अन्नदी मारे निजंगा देवड़ू नीनु पिलिस्तुनार नी निच्छेत उन्ते नी वो रिजाइन जेसी सेवचे नेनु कोड़ा आपरिका आमी स्कूललो पंजेस्तान नेनु कोड़ा रिजाइन जेसी नी तो काटु सेवजेस्तान
आई वाज़ चॉलेंज्ड बाय तू पीपल इन ऑवर फैलोशिप
मन सहवासमलो मारे इदर व्यक्तिल चेत नेनु सवालचे बढ़न
ब्रेडर बख्सिंग
वकती सवाड़ बख्सिंग
एंड ब्रेडर अरविंदम
रंडो दिगा सवाड़ अरविंदम
आई वाज़ सीन डेयर लाइफ एंड टेचुमेनी
मारियका जीवितानी साक्षानी नेनु चूसन
आई सेड तू माय वाइफ
नेनु ना भारी तो चपन
गॉड ऑफ डोसर्वेंट इज माय गॉड आवर गॉड अलसो
मारे आस्वकुल एक देवड़ू ना देवड़ू
इज डी सेम गॉड
अधे देवड़ाइन
इज डी सेम यस्टरडे, टुडे एंड फॉरएवर
आइन निन्ना नेडू निरंतमूर एक रीतिका उन्नद
इज डी एटरनल गॉड
आइन निच्छुडाइन नेट
इन हिम देयर इज नो वेरियेबिलनेस
आइन यंदू ये चंचलत्वमु लेदु
फॉर हिट यर्स देयर इज नो एंड
मारे आइनको
फॉर हिट यर्स देयर इज नो एंड
मारियका सोचनमलोको मिति लेदु
या इज डी एटरनल गॉड
आइन शास्वतिदाइन देव
इज अवरलास्टिंग फादर
आइन निच्छुडाइन तंड्री
सो दिस आर डी थॉट्स डेट आई केम एंड आई शेड विथ माय वाइफ
मारे ई तलम्पलन्नी कलिगुंडी ना भारी तो नेनु पंचकुं
सो वी हैव नो डाउट व्हाट्सेवर वी कैन सर्व डी लॉर्ड
मारे इप्पु बेविदमयन संदेहमु लेदु मनम प्रभुनी सेविद
देन वी वर प्रेय
मीम प्राधन जेस्ताव
वेरी नेक्स्ट ईयर
मारे आ तरवत सोच
ब्रेडर बख्सिंग विथ अदर सीनरी सर्वेंट दे केम तू दिल्ली
मारे सवाड़ बख्सिंग आरु मिगिलना सीनरी दायव सावकुल दिल्ली कोच
सेट अपाउट सम ऑफ आज डेट डी एल्डर्स ऑफ डी चर्च
मालो कोन्त मंदिनी सावकुल गा प्रचेकिंचडान
एंड आई वाज़ वन अमांग देम
पत्तल गा प्रचेकिंचडान कोचनार वारलो नेनु ओकड
सो आई थॉट दिस मेबी डी थिंग डेट गॉड इज गिविंग मी
मारे नेनु आपरा आलोचिंचन देवड़ू बौसा इधे नक केवाल अनुकुंटन
एंड आई नेक्लेक्ड डेट रिकॉल
आइते आप पिलिपुन नेनु निलक्ष
ओल्ड दिस आई आई डूइंग ऑलरेडी
मारे नेनु ऑलरेडी इप्पु पत्तगाउंड युवानी चेस्तान
नो आई आई डी एल्डर ऑफ डी चर्च
इपु नेनु संग पद
आलांग जदर वर्कर्स आई आई डी को-कोऑपरेशन कोर्डनेशन इन्विलिटी वी वर सर्विंग डी लॉर्ड
मारे मिगिलनाई वंटी पदल तो कालसी साकारिस्तु मारे नेनु परिजरी जेस्ताव उन्नान
ईयर्स पास्ट बाय
मारे सोचन गतिंच
आई वाज़ वेरी बिज़ी इन डी वर्क इन माय ऑफिस एंड अलसो इन डी चर्च
मारे नायका ऑफिस पन्नलो तिरिकलाकुंडा उन्नान संग बाजितलो पन्नलो कोड़ा तिरिकलाक
एंड देन गॉड गा इज पुट लॉट ऑफ ट्रबल्स फॉर मी
मारे प्रभु एनो यबंदलो नक पेटिन
89
यनबय तोमिदी
अप्रैल 18
अप्रैल 15
माय वाइफ वाज़ कॉल्ड ग्लोरी इन अट्रीन एक्सीडेंट
ना भारी या ट्राइन एक्सीडेंटलो प्रभुदेके महिमलोक पिलव बढिंदी
इन डी ट्राइन माय एल्डर्स डॉटर हिप्सीबा एंड माय यंगस्ट संग जॉशो वर अलसो देयर
मारे नायका पत्तकुमार ते हिप्सीबा मर्चिनकुमाडु जान कोड़ा अधे ट्राइनलो उन्नार
एंड माय वधिनमा सन आइजिया तिमोती वी इज नो सर्वेंट ऑफ गॉड इन सिंगापुर ही वाज़ एस्कॉटिंग देम फ्रॉम बेंगलुरु
मारे इप्पु सिंगापुरलो मारे देवन सावकुल आइजिया तिमोती गार कोड़ा वारकी साकारी गा उन्नार
हां इज माय वधिनमा सन मा वधिनम्मा कोडुको
मा वधिनम्मा कोडुको
सो ही वाज़ ट्रेवलिंग ही वाज़ ब्रिंगिंग देम अक्चुअली फ्रॉम बेंगलुरु
मारे बेंगलुरु निंची वारनी तेस्करावाल अन्न उन्नार
इल्ले वाज़ चेस्तुन
चेस्तुन
अपु एक्सीडेंट आइन
अपु एक्सीडेंट आइंदी
युल बचकिनारु आई आई वाइन
मारे व्युल बतिकिनारु आम पोइंदी
डेट इज व्हाट आई टोल्ड देम
मारे अधे नेनु वार तो चपन
इट इज गॉड्स डूइंग
मारे इधि देवड़ू विदानम
इट कुड़ हैव हैपन अदर वेरम
मारे इधि वेरे विदानमलो कोड़ा जरुगिं
यू वाज़ वाल गोन एंड सी वुड हैव लिव्ड
मारे मनमंदा कोड़ा पोये
देले मीर अंता बचकी आम पोइंद
मीर अंता
देले आम बचकी मीर पोइंद
आम आम बतिकी मीर अंता कोड़ा पोइंद
बट गॉड हैपन इन डिड इट इन सम अदर वे
आइते प्रभु वेरे विदानमलो आदि चेसन
सो आस्ट डी लॉर्ड
प्रभुन आडगंडी
व्हाय गॉड गेव इट इज लाइफ
मारे एन्दुकु प्रभु ई जीवितान निच्छन
सो गॉड अटैक्ड माय नेस्ट माय नेस्ट वाज़ डिस्टर्ब ना गुड नु देवड़ू चदरगुट
ना गुड नु देवड़ू चदरगुटन
देयर वाज़ डी बिक वैक्यूम आते होम
मारे इंटिलो मारे काली आरपड़ सून्य
हां इट वाज़ नॉट डेट सी वाज़ सिक्क फॉर सम टाइम एंड देन गॉड प्रिपेयर्स योर हॉट सी इट इज नॉट लाइक डेट सर्टनली सी इज नॉट देयर
आइते आम केदो अनारोग्यम अच्छी बागोका कोन्त कालानी चनीपोते आदि नम्मदिनम्मदिका सिद्ध परिचनाटल उन्दे दी अलाका कोण अकस्मात्तक प्रभु तेस्कुल
गॉड गेव मी बर्ड फ्रॉम सेकंड कोरिंचियन चैप्टर 12 वर्ड 9 देयर ही सेड माय ग्रेस इज सफिशिएंट फॉर यू
मारे प्रभु नातो माटलान रंडो कोरिंदी पनिंदा अज्जयम तम्दावशलो ना क्रोपन नीकु चालन
एंड देन डानियल चैप्टर 4 वर्ड 35
मारे डानियल ग्रंधम नालग अज्जयम 35 वचन
ही डस्ट थिंग्स अकॉर्डिंग तू डी गुड प्लेसर ऑफ इस विल इन डी मिट्ठ ऑफ डी इनहैबिटेंस ऑफ डी अर्थ वु कैन होल्ड हिस हैंड एंड से व्हाट डू यस लव
बूलोका निवासल यादला तनकिस्तमयन दांतियो आइन जरुगिंच्चिन आइन चेई पटुगुनी दिनी चेटिकुनी यवडानी यवर आइन तो चपगल
नोबैली कैन आस्क इम
मारे यवर कोड़ा आडगलेर
सो आई एक्सेप्टेड इट इज गॉड्स विल
मारे आदि देवनी चित्तमानी नेनु दन अंगीकरिंचन
नेजर बीन और माय चिल्ड्रन कंप्लेंट अबाउट इट
नेनु गानी ना पिल्लल गानी दन गुरिंची एविदमयन ट्वेंटी
वी एक्सेप्टेड इट आज गॉड्स विल
मारे आदि देवनी चित्तमगा मीम अंगीकरिंचन
इट इज फ्रॉम देन ऑन लॉट ऑफ थॉन्ग्स गॉड गेव मी
मारे अक्कनिंची देवड़ू अनेकमयन अवकाशल इच्छन
अनेकमयन पाटल
अनेकमयन पाटल नेर्प
डोस आर डी थॉन्ग्स डेर्प
अक्का
गॉड गेव मी लॉट ऑफ थॉन्ग्स तू कम्पोज
आक्षमिंचे अपु निंची अनेकमयन ट्वेंटी पाटल रायडान की प्रभु अवकाश
हां पाटल राजनाम कम्पोज जेस्नान तू यंक्रेज माय चिल्ड्रन आई हैव डी फ्लॉक आते होम सिक्स फाइव चिल्ड्रन
मारे नाइंडी देखराइद गुरु पिल्लल उन्नार वालंदरकी प्रोचहकरंगा मारे चेसन
एंड दे आर बीइंग संग इन डी चर्च अलसो
अवी संगमलो कोड़ा पाडन
सो आई हैव रियली सेट असाइड डेट कॉलिंग
मारे आयका पिलिपुन नेनु कंप्ली ऊर्तिका पकन बेटेस
आई वाज़ टोटली इवॉल्व्ड इन डी मिनिस्ट्री इन डी चर्च
मारे संगम एक परिचरलो सम्पूर्णंगा भागम देस
वेरी नेक्स्ट ईयर माय सन वाज़ वेरी सीरियस
मारे नेक्स्ट तरवत सोचनमे नक कुमारन की चाला तेवरमयन अनारोग्य
अन्य ट्राइम अन्य सन वाज़ अलसो वेरी सीरियस
मारे तरवत सोचन तरवत कोड़ा व्यक्तिकोड़ा अनारोग्य
अन्य अन्य सन
मारे वेर
सो लाइक डेट सुनामी आप तो सुनामी हिट मी
आ रीतिका सुनामी तरवत सुनामी ममल ननुको
आ तर टाइम
आ सम
आई वाज़ इन कोवर
मारे नेनु कोवर
राजमंड कोवर माय सिस्टर वाज़ देयर
मारे ना सहोदर एकड़ उन्दी राजमंड
देयर वाज़ स्पेशल मीटिंग
अकड़ा प्रचेक
आई वाज़ तू गेव डी वर्ड
नेनु वाक्यान्नी
आई शेड डी वर्ड डेट इज डी लास्ट टाइम
मारे चिवर सारी
नेक्स्ट ईयर आई हैव तू गो तू दिल्ली
मारे तरवत दिन दिल्ली वेल अलिचिवर गा दिन
डी लोकल सर्वेंट ऑफ गॉड एलिशा वाज़ ट्रांसलेटिंग फॉर मी
मारे अकड़ा स्थानिक सावकुल एलिशा गार नक तजम
वेरी पॉयस जेंटलमेन वेरी पॉयस सर्वेंट ऑफ गॉड
चाला देवनी यंदू बक्तिगलिगिन नेट वंटी दायव जेन
यंतो बक्तिगलिगिन
यंतो बक्तिगलिगिन
वंडरफुल ट्रांसलेटर इन तेलुगु
मारे तेलुगुलो अद्भुतंगा तजम
एंड वी आर वंडरफुल टाइम
मारे अद्भुतमयन समय मीम
आई वाज़ फिनिश्ड माय प्रेचिंग
मारे ना वर्तमान मुगिंचन तर
आई जस्ट नेल्ड डाउन देयर एंड आई वाज़ प्रेय इन माय हॉट
मारे अकड़ नेनु मोकरिंची ना हृदयमलो प्राधन जेस
देन ब्रेडर एलिशा वाज़ अनाउंसिंग
मारे सवाड़ एलिशा गार प्राधन जेसन
एंड ब्रेडर वाज़ प्रेचिंग आई हैव सम बॉडन व्हिच आई वुड लाइक तू शेयर विथ यू ही सेड
मारे आ सावाड़ वाक्यम पंचकुंचुंडगा ना हृदयमलोक भारम अच्छिंदे आदि नेनु पंचकावल अनुकुंटन
देन ही सेड लाइक दिस
मारे आन ई रीतिका चप
व्हेन ब्रेडर इज गिविंग डी वर्ड विथ सो मच ऑफ सीरियसनेस
मारे इंता तेवरम गा सावाड़ देवन वाक्यम इस्तन
विथ सो मच ऑफ बॉडन ही इज प्रेचिंग
यंतो भारम तो आइन बोधिस्ताव
व्हाय ही इज टिल वर्किंग व्हाय कांट ही रिजाइन एंड सर्व डी लॉर्ड
मारे इनके एन्दुका आइन उज्जोगन चेस्ताव उन्नार रिजाइन जेसी पूर्तिकाल साव एन्दुक चेक कोड
गतुकुमन
नेनु गतुकुमन
आई नेवर टोल्ड हिम
मारे नेनु इप्पु आइन चप
आई नेवर शेड विथ एनीबॉडी बिटवीन माय वाइफ एंड मी एंड गॉड
मारे इधि नाकु ना भारीकु देवन की मज्जलो तप्पा यवरकी नेनु चप
व्हेन ही सेड डेट
एप्पु आइते आइन
आई टूक इट आज डी ग्रेट रिमाइंडर फ्रॉम डी लॉर्ड
मारे नेनु आदि गोपा न्यापकम प्रभुनींची न्यापकम चेसनार अन्न नेनु तेस्कुन
एंड देन आते डेट टाइम अलसो आई डिड नॉट टोल्ड हिम
मारे आ समयलो नेनु अतंदा चप
आ समयलो कोड़ा नेनु चप
आ समयलो कोड़ा नेनु
देन आई डिड नॉट टोल्ड माय सिस्टर अलसो
ना सहोदरी कोड़ा नेनु चप
वेंट बैक तू दिल्ली
नेनु तिरिक दिल्ली
ऑन मार्च 8
मार्च 15
वेरी नेक्स्ट ईयर आई रिजाइन माय जॉब
मरे आदिकांडमु पदिहनाज्यम आरोचनम्
That is why I said all these things.
मरे अंदके इवन्नी कोडा नेन चेप्पनानु
Righteousness is linked with faith.
मरे योकन नीतियाने दी विश्वासमुनको अनुसंधानमुन
If you have faith in God
निवु देवनीयन्न विश्वासमुन
Then you will have righteousness.
अप्रु निवु नीतिनिकलिगिन्ताव
When you have righteousness
एप्रडे तिनि निवु नीतिनिकलिगिन्ताव
You will have close communion with God.
देवनुतो सन्निहितमायन सम्मानमुन कलिगिन्ताव
You get connected to heaven.
निवु परलोकमुतो अनुसंधानमु चेवड़ताव
You don't need to make long prayers.
निवु दीर्घकाल प्राधन चेवल्लस्न अवसरमु लेद
One prayer from the bottom of the heart, "Oh Lord, help me."
निवु होदियांत्रणगमुन्चि ओ प्रभाव सहायम चेमन ओक्क प्राधन चाल
That's all I used to do.
नेन अदेचेस्तावन
Lord used to answer my prayers.
प्रभु ना प्राधनलुक जवाब
My children with their own eyes, they have seen how God sustained us.
मरे देवुरु ये रीतिकम ममलुक कापाडनारु कोशिन्छनारु ना फिल्ललु जूस्तावच्छनारु
Genesis fifteen verse six.
आदिकांडमु पदिहनाज्यम आरोचनम् अथडु यहोवानु नमेनु आयनाद्यात्थनिकिन नीतिगा यंच्चबडेनु
मीरु नमिनारा?
मीरु नमिनारा?
हाँ, रक्षणपुण्यारु, no doubt about it.
मीरु रक्षणपुण्यारु अंदलो संदेहमले
But trust him for everything.
मरे अन्नीटिकोरकु आयनयन्न विश्वासमुन
Depend upon him.
आयनुमेदा आधारपड़ण
He will never ever let you down.
निनु एन्नडु एप्रुकोडा आयन सिकु पार्चडु
What is the central verse of the Bible?
बाइबिललु मज्जा वाक्यमेन्टी
Psalm one hundred and eighteen verse eight.
मरे कीर्तना नोट पद्धेनमिदी एनमिदी
सम्राणी?
मरे चाल
अंदर दिन, अंदर दिन
मरे अंद्रतियेन्दी कीर्तना नोट पद्धेनमिदी एनमिदो वच्छनम् मनुष्यलु नमुकोनुटिकान्ते यहोवानु आश्रयिंचुटा मेलु
Get to know him.
मनुष्यलु नमुकोनुटिकान्ते यहोवानु आश्रयिंचुटा मेलु
Practice it, you will be a blessed person.
निवु दिन्नी क्रियापोरकमुगच्चै निवु आश्रयिंच्चबड्न व्यक्तिगाउद
What do you read in Psalm thirty four verse five?
कीर्तनमु पैनालुक आइधलु एम चदताम
They looked round to him and were enlightened, and their faces were not ashamed.
वारु आयनतत्त चोडका वार्कि वेलुक कलिगेनु वारी मुकमुल एन्नडु लज्जिम्पकपवनु
I never expressed any of my need to anybody.
नायका अवसरता यवरकी एप्रुकोडा नेनु मरे क्रियापोरकमु एप्रु नेनु चप्पनु
Not even a hint I gave.
मरे ये विदमेन चूचिनुकोडा येवनु नाक अवसर
That's what Brother Baxing told us.
मरे अदेस अवड़ बख्सिंग आर
Many times I heard in his messages.
चालासारु आयन वर्तमानमले नान्त
How we would have implicit faith on God?
मरे देवनीयन्न मरे विरुवेंटने विश्वासमु ये रीतिकम कलिगिन्डाली
Trust him, he will never let you down.
आयनयन्नु विश्वास नमिकुन्छिम आयन निनु सिकु पार्चडु
Mysterious way God will help us.
मरे अद्भुतमायन रीतिलु प्रभु मर्मयुक्त
If God is not answering your prayers
देवुरुक वाल्नी प्राधन अंगिकरिंचक
Maybe you have not come fully on the ground of righteousness.
निवु सम्पूर्णंगा नीतमंतुनिका अवलेदेमु
Think about him.
दानुकुरिंच आलोचिन
Verify your life.
निवु जीवितान्न परिक्ष
Verify various aspects of your life.
निवु जीवितामुलो चेसे प्रतिकोणानी आलोचिन
Then Lord will tell you where you are missing.
मरे निवु ये एकड़एते तपिपोइनावो अधि प्रभुनिक
Then ask the Lord, "Lord, forgive me."
अप्रु प्रभुनाडुक प्रवाक्षमिन
Tells me to trust you fully.
सम्पूर्णंगा निनु एन्नु नमिकुन्छिनकनक सहाय
Read Hebrews chapter eleven again and again.
एप्रिलिगरासन पत्रिका पदकोण आज्जम तिरी
By faith, by faith, by faith it says.
अकड़ा चप्पुबड़ेन्दी विश्वासमुद्वारा, विश्वासमुद्वारा, विश्वासमुद्वारा
Those soldiers of, the heroes of faith, they did wonderful things.
मरे आ विश्वास वीरुलु अद्भुतमायन कार्यालय जश्नारु
Shame God is our God.
मरे अदेदेवुरु मनदेवु
That is how I believe.
मरे आ रीतिकम नेनु नमिनान
Thus far God has led me.
इन्तवरकु प्रभु नन नडिपिन्छ
In a mysterious way he is leading me.
मरे मर्मयुक्तमायन विधानमुलो नन नडिपिन्छाड
May God bless this world.
देवुरी एक्का वाक्यमुन दिविंचिनुक
Shall we pray?
प्राधन जेस्कुन्ताम
Our loving heavenly Father
मा प्रेमगला परलोकपुतन्री
Our gracious and wonder working God
क्रोपगला अद्भुत कार्यमुल चेय देव
We thank thee for the ministry and the testimony that we could share.
मरे वाक्य परिचर्न्न बट्टी साक्षान्न बट्टी मी कोवन्दनालु
For the benefit and the blessing of thy people.
मरे निवु प्रदल्यक्का मेलु क्षयमावृद्धिकोरकु
Poor or help them that they may continue to have faith on thee.
प्रभाव वार येडतेक्कने विश्वासमुन्छिनाट्लु सहायम चेमु
So that thou could work out on their behalf.
आ रीतिका वारी पक्षान्ना मीरु पनिच्यमनी प्रार्थिस्त
Answer our prayers on their behalf.
वारी पक्षान्का मा प्राधनलु अंगिकरिंच्मन
Thank thee for all those who are laboring in various departments.
आया डिपार्टमेंटलु प्रयासपड़तन वार्न्न बट्टी मी कोवन्दनालु
Bless every one of them.
प्रत्यवक्कर्नी आश्रयदिच्छ
Prepare for the afternoon meeting and also in the evening meeting.
मज्जानकालकुडिकोरकु, सायंकालकुडिकोरकु ममलु सिद्धपर्चन
Pray with thanksgiving in Jesus' precious name.
एसु कृष्ट प्रभावारी प्रसिस्तमायन नामुलो क्रियितापोरकमु गाडिगेवेडकुन्छनाम तन्री
Amen.
एसु प्रभुवारी गरिशुद्ध नामुमुलो मे अंदरके गोडा शिवमुलो तेली परिस्तुन्तिनाम देवु दिच्छिनाह्वानम्, माह्वाननु मनिंचि विरागलिनंदके प्रभु निष्ठिस्तुन्तिनाम इप्पडु मरला तिरिगी मनुकी मूडु नारगंतकु, मूडु नारगंतकु रेटु एल्लोद्दु, चेद्रपोद्दु मूडु नारगंतकु मध्यानकाला शेषन आरम्भमायदी देवनीयक्का सन्निदिलु साक्षमुन्दिदी, ओका दायवसेवकनीयक्का साक्षमुन कलिगिन्ताम तिरिगी रात्रिवेला एडु गंतलकु प्रचेकमयन कुडिकन मलु कलिगिन्ताम रात्रि एडु गंतलकु प्रत्येकमयन कुडिकन कलिगिन्ताम ओक्कन निमिशमु गोडा ये री त्याड़ाउंददु सम्यानका आरम्भिंच्चबडी सम्यानिकु मुगिंच्चबड्दुदी कनिका दायचेसे ई मध्यकालमुलो मीरु सिस्टर्सकी का वश्तिस्कोचु ब्रदर्सकी गोडा विसरांतिस्कोचु कनिका मीरु अटे तु चेद्रवेल्लवद्दु गुर्तुन्स्कुन्ने सिस्टर्सकी वाशरूम्सु कुड़वाइपुनकिन्दी भागमुलो प्रत्यप्पाई भागमुलो आवेदिंगमी वाइपुकी लेफ्ट वाइपुन्तै अलागिन्ने ब्रदर्सकी मीरुन्न भागमुलोने किन्दी भागमुलो पाई भागमुलोन्तै किन्दी भागमु आड्कुन्ती पाई भागमुलो गोड़ उपयेगिंच्छकोचु इरु वेलाडानिकु वेयिटुंदिदी कनिका ई मंदिरावरडलो मात्रु टाइलर्स लेवु एक गण्यापुन्यज्ञस्कुनी उपयेगिंच्छुन्ने तरता मीरु उपयेगिंच्छुन्ना पुड़ु टैपु करेक्टिका आपेस्सेन्डी टैप आपेसी रण्डी रात्रि टैप मीरु एवरोकरु आपलेदु आपनकारणना टैंकु पुलु काली एपेन्दी काली एपु तेले मलु मोटरस नील बढ़दानुकुन्ते टैपलु अंते नीललु ग्राउंडलो गोड़ नील लेखनुपेने पाइपुलु नीलले, हैंदाइपेने अन्मात कनिका लान्टी बन्दलाकुनुन्तानुकी चुस्कुन्दी चक्करका टैप मीरु आपेयर लेद चुस्कुन्दी गुर्तुन्स्कुनी निनट्टिनुमुले सिस्टर्स अंदर ई भागमुलो कुचिन्तारु ब्रदर्स अंदर किन्दी भागमुलो कुचिन्तारु इन्का मिगिलिंटे ब्रदर्सकिन्का स्थालम चालकपोते टैपु नमन टेंटवेस्सन जरिगेन्दी पाइकलु कुचोचु ये री किन्दी सरिपोकपोते पाई भागमुलकिलु कुचोचु सिस्टर्स एवरन्ना पैद्धवेस्लोवाल्लु अलाग ब्रदर्सलो पैद्धवेसु रुद्दलाइनवाल्लु तरता दायवसेवकलाइनवार्ड टेबल्स किन्दी भागमुलो वेय्बर्दाई मीरु किन्दी भागमुलो टेबल्समा कुचन्नी कनिका रुद्दलाइन सिस्टर्स रुद्दलाइन ब्रदर्स दायवसेवकलु किन्दी भागमुलो टेबल्स वेस्ताम ब्रदर्सका टेबल्स रेंजास्तार अकड़ कुचन्नी मीरु सिस्टर्सकु किन्दी मामलुका कुच्योडानुक अवकाशमुन पाइकरण्डी किन्दीका कुच्योडाकुन्ना पाइकरण्डी मिट्लेकी रागल्वाल मीक अत्यावसर परिस्तुलो स्टेप्स एक्लेन्वाल्लु रुद्दलगानी वेस्स चेन्नदाइन्न स्टेप्स एक्लेन्न परिस्तुलो लिफ्ट उपयेगिंच्छकोचु लिफ्ट अंदरमीर वाड्बाकन्दी मीका अवसर उन्नम वाल्लु मात्रु लिफ्ट उपयेगिंच्छुन्दी अंकुलकोरकु प्राधन चेन्डी नाइट मीटिंग रेप दे कालम पदिगंतलकु मरला आराधनकी मनम कुड़कुन्न वस्तामु तिरिगी मूडु वर्तमानालु रेपुन्तै आराधन वर्तमानम्, प्रभु बल्लवर्तमानम् मुगिपु वर्तमानमुन्दिदी, फाइनल वर्तमानम् आतर्वाता रात्रिकी एडु गंतलकु मरला चिवरी मीटिंगुन्दिदी रेप एडु गंतलकु अंदरकी गोडा ई स्थानकी संघानकी वच्चेवारकी एवरीडे प्रेमामिन्दुनदी रेप रात्रि इन्कुकु वेदमायन प्रेमामिन्दुन्दिदी मामलुका प्रतिरोज प्रेमामिन्दुन्दिदी कदा ये रु बख्सिंग गार्ड मनुकी चिन्दी सांभर रस्ममे ओक्क प्रेमामिन्दु रेप रात्रि अलाउन्दन मटिंकुक वेयर्गा उन्दचु अलि गुर्तुन्स्कुनी रेप चिवरी मीटिंग वरुकु अंदरु मातो देवन सन्निदिने अनुभविंशालने मनोजस्तुन्तिनाम आश्रवाद प्राधन तरता बाइटनिंच वश्चन वारु मा यहोवानिस्सी बिडलु तोपाटु मीरु गोडा कस्ता चापल दिटमुलो वड्डिंचिटमुलो विल्फुल्गा, हृदयपोरकमुगा हेल्प चेन्डी, सहायम चेन्डी तेलिगी कदा ये री सहायमु चेयेन्डी चेस्ते मीकोडा क्षयमुन्दिदी तोनर्तोनर्गा मीरु उपयोगिच्छुन्न कसे विसरांतिस्कोकलर कनिका दायचेसे गुर्तुन्स्कुनी हेल्प चेन्डी माकु मपन्नुवाल्लुकी अत्यन्न वंत्सालकल्लगल गोल्लन्ने चापल दिस्युल चापल देन्डी चय्यगल्गी हेल्पु ब्रदर्स एन्वर्च चेन्डी सिस्टर्स यहोवानिस्सी वाल्लु वंत्पात्रलु मीरु चय्यगल्गी परिचर्या दास्कोकुन्दा एल्पई हेल्प चेन्डी अंत बोजनाल चेस्न तर्वाता वच्च उठ्चे विष्णुलो गोड़ मलु यानुसेम चय्यमु मीका अलरेडी डूटिस वेडन जरिगेन्दी मीरु वच्ची मी पल्लम इच्छेस्कुन्दी आश्रवाद प्राधन
Now with the grace of our Lord and our Savior Jesus Christ Love of God come in of the Holy Spirit be with us now and forevermore, amen.
Amen. महिमानिरिक्षणमन्न प्रभु येते आयनेमालो उन्नादु आयनेनालो उन्नादु प्रभु येसु प्रयायेसु प्रभु येसु प्रयायेसु Rest the Lord. मीरु गोड चप्पुगोलालाज फर्स्ट वन चापल दिस्ते सिस्टर्स एन्वर्चलु बोजनाकुचु कार्पेड तियोद्दु कार्पेड तियोद्दु मा वक्त तियिंदिदी, अब्दंगाउन्तेग्राम वक्त तियिंदी चापल, तलावकसापा, एंड वेंटने तलावचाप तियिंदी लिफ्ट तर्गतर्ग चापल हेल्प चेन्डी, मुंद चापल दिस्ते तर्गत सिस्टर्सकी कडु कुचिन्तारु तरता वंत्सालमी अलरेडी यानुन्चेस्नामु मी गुर्तुन्स्कुनु ओक्क दायवसेवकन पिल्लुवंडी प्राधन जेन्सेन्डी आतर्वाता पाइक बम्बिच्य बोजनाल, पाइक बम्बिच्यन्डी एकड़े प्रिपेयर जेसे, एकड़ प्रिपेयर चेन्डी तर्गत, एकड़ तीगल्गी एवल्ला अकड़त्त सापल तियिंदी पाटुलपाटुकोरकु बोजनाम चापा सदनंदम् मज्जलोकलाइने इन्नडुगुरु कुचिन्तनारु, कुच्योनलागने मज्जलोकलाइनुन्चोडन रेट पक्का हाँ वेस्त्रमंचिदी जल, ई लाइन ओक्कड़त्त सेंट्रेन्ड हाँ, ई लाइन सरिपेड, सालपुतिंग गोलाइन बेटोचु कुच्यु मुंद सर्त्कुन्डर मीरु माई साप चट्टाल ई साप चट्टाल हल्ला द यादु गोल्ला हाँ नाचेन्न पुस्मुन्न नाचेन्न पुस्मुन्न मोदुगुर्ज Rest the Lord. देखलाहु 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 हाँ हाँ अद्वाक्यमु आठल आक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी ई साक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी प्रभु येसु नंगी करिंची ई दिन्चे दावेला प्रभु येसु नंगी करिंची जागु चेसे दावेला रारमो विश्वासी रारमो विश्वासी ई साक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी ई साक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी अत्मलादायमु चेसिरी अत्मलादायमु चेसिरी ई साक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी ई साक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी रात्रि अंदरको चिन्दा बोजनाम अनाहाईपेवेदा ओटेस्ट सर्फार परिषद्रवैन मातन्री, परलोकमुन्दन्न मा देव महाराज्यमिक्स तूत्रालु निड्ब्रोलु यहोवानिस्सीलो मिरिचिनाई पच्चे कुडिकिल्न बट्टी वन्दनालु ईरोजु गोड इन्तवरकु मी नडिपिच्छिनारु, मी आत्मी आहारान्नी मी दास्तुन्द्वारा साक्षम्द्वारा माकेन्तो विनिपिच्छन्दलुकायस्तोत्रालु यन्न वाक्यान मर्दियालो बद्रपत्स्कुनी मी राकरकोरकायस्त दपनट्लुगा प्रतिपिडन गोड़ा मी दिविंचन्डी अलागिन्ने मी इंटी समृद्धलुन्दी तिस्क्राबनी आहारान्बट्टी एवर प्रेम, प्रयास, समर्पणबट्टी वच्छिन्दो वरंदरन गोड़ दिविंच्चमु वन्डी वड्डिंचिन्न वार नास्तुदेन्सन्डी मी प्रेमरसिंच्छुन्नुक सायपड़मनी नेक्स्ट सेक्शन कोरकायस्त दपत्स्मनी एसु प्रभु नामुमुलो प्राधन जेसु नामु तन्री
Amen.
Amen. स्तुतिंचुना प्राणमा स्तुतिंचुना प्राणमा प्रभु चपुडे चिवाहार मेना प्रभयन एसुकी स्वारीकी
Jai
यहोवानिस्सी वासी प्रभयन एसुकी स्वारीकी
Jai
हल्लेल्या
हल्लेल्या दायचेसी ग्रमणिंचन्डी
कीपैड फोन कीपैड सेलफोन एवरो पोगोट्कुनारु वेरेतो पोगोट्कुनारु वारो चितिस्कोच राल्लातो कोट्टबडीरी रम्पालाचे कोयबडीरी राल्लाचे कोट्टबडीरी रम्पालाचे कोयबडीरी धोवार्तानु साटिंथीरी धोवार्तानु साटिंथीरी ई साक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी ई साक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी कोरडातो कोट्टबडीरी तेरसाल संकेल्लनु तेरसाल संकेल्लनु वरिनाटनक परसालेदु वरिनाटनक परसालेदु ई साक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी ई साक्षमो येदी ई पल्ली आर्पणाये दी सासीवा यागमोगा अबू सेवानु तरिगिंचे दी सासीवा यागमोगा अबू सेवानु तरिगिंचे दी सुवार्ता प्रभावाये सुवार्ता प्रभावाये संकवता पिन्ना बढ़े संकवता पिन्ना बढ़े नी साक्षमो ये दी नी पल्ली यार पण ये दी नी साक्षमो ये दी नी पल्ली यार पण ये दी ओता विस्तार में तो ओता कोयो वारु कोंदारे ओता विस्तार में तो ओता कोयो वारु कोंदारे एसु निन पिलचूर चुर्ने एसु निन पिलचूर चुर्ने रोशि वेसरवा प्रभु पिलोपुर रोशि वेसरवा प्रभु पिलोपुर नी साक्षमो ये दी नी पल्ली यार पण ये दी नी साक्षमो ये दी नी पल्ली यार पण ये दी अर्पिंचे दाननु अत्मप्राण शरीरमु तो अर्पिंचे दाननु अत्मप्राण शरीरमु तो नाह सिलुवानु ये तुक्कनी नाह सिलुवानु ये तुक्कनी इन्ने वेम्पाडिंतु नुने दो इन्ने वेम्पाडिंतु नुने दो नी साक्षमो ये दी नी पल्ली यार पण ये दी नी साक्षमो ये दी नी पल्ली यार पण ये दी प्रभु ये सुनंगी करिंची नी दिन चेदावेला प्रभु ये सुनंगी करिंची जागू चेसे दवेला नेल को लेमो नेल को लेमो रारमो विश्वासी रारमो विश्वासी नी साक्षमो ये दी नी पल्ली यार पण ये दी नी साक्षमो ये दी नी पल्ली यार पण ये दी
ये पाठु पदुल्लो चेवरबाट पदहारो बाट ये सु प्रभु मेरा जयवन है इन तेलुगलो निच्छिन्न बाट बसोलो नालगन नारो याडो एसु प्रभु वे ना कोच्यो
एसु प्रभु ना कोचीवमो प्रकिमा तेसे युडायने एसु प्रभु ना कोचीवमो प्रकिमा तेसे युडायने महासमर्जुणु ना प्रिय ये सु महापरत्र जाली आयन महासमर्जी है प्यारा ये सु महाप्रतापी है तेना ये सु हल्ले लुया 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 प्रभु ये सुके फिले गने चलता हो मैं जात्र गने प्रभु सु यंबड़ी वेले दनु पाडूचू पाडूचू रेले गने लोकाकी पातय सक्षड़ो गांभाई लोकाकी पातय सक्षड़ो गांभाई उसके लिए जीव गमय अपने लिए ना जीव गमय उसके लिए जीव गमय अपने लिए ना जीव गमय ये सु प्रभु मेरा दीवा दो है महिमा के या जाव है ये सु प्रभु मेरा दीवा दो है प्रकिमा तेसे जाव है ये सुने साथ चले दनु उर्यात्तको भड़ने चढ़नु ये सुने साथ चले दनु उर्यात्तको भड़ने चढ़नु आये उस्तापनक जीव गमय आये उस्तापनक जीव गमय आयावने प्ररु गमय आजनावन की तप्पा डोगमय आयावने प्ररु गमय आजनावन की तप्पा डोगमय ये सु प्रभु मेरा दीवा दो है महिमा के या जाव है ये सु प्रभु मेरा दीवा दो है महिमा के या जाव है अहिरान पारे जात्र जाते सखलो राता हत्ते हत्ते मेरा अहिरान पारे जात्र जाते सखलो करा सत्ते हत्ते फिलुवानु नाकर आप जालो गांभाई फिलुवानु नाकर आप जाले गांभाई आगे आगे सागे गांभाई विचेका दूरा नागे गुण गांभाई आगे आगे सागे गांभाई विचेका दूरा जेगो गांभाई ये सु प्रभु मेरा दीवा दो है महिमा के या जाव है ये सु प्रभु मेरा दीवा दो है महिमा के या जाव है जीवन भर्मय जात्र जाते जयवंत जीवन जीते जोते जीवन भर्मय अहिरपो वातो जयवंत जीवन जीते जोते प्रिय ये सुक मिले जावो गांभाई प्रिय ये सुक मिले जावो गांभाई हरणा बालाई चाको गांभाई अन्य के जीवन ने पुण्य गांभाई हरणा बालाई कोरके देव गमय अन्य जीवन ने पुण्य गमय ये सु प्रभु मेरा दीवा है महिमा के या जाव है ये सु प्रभु मेरा दीवा है महिमा के या जाव है महासमर्जी है कार्य ये सु महाप्रतापी है मेरा ये सु महासमर्जी है कार्य ये सु महाप्रतापी है मेरा ये सु हल्ले लुया 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 हल्ले लुया
डायरेक्ट चेसी ग्रामन चेन्ने कीपैड फोन इकड़ा यावर पोगोट्कुनारु अरे मी देते ने वोचितिस कोण वोचितिकोच